Good morning and welcome to our Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this September 21st of 2021. I'm pleased that we have Pastor Randy Cheek with us today with Eastwood Baptist Church. He is also the Senior Chaplain with Cobb County PD. Followed by that invocation, we will have Officer Dessisher with Cobb County Police providing our pledge. If you're willing and able, please stand for our invocation and then again, followed by our pledge.
Let's pray. Father, thank you for this time this morning. Thank you for the business that will be conducted right here in these chambers. Thank you for our commissioners. Thank you for what you're doing. So bless this meeting, bless this time, but most of all, your will be done. I pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor and Officer Dessisher. Our meeting is now officially called to order. We will have a walkthrough of today's agenda provided by John Peterson, who is our zoning manager.
Thank you and good morning. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case, we call it in numerical order. When each case is called, we would ask that the applicant and would stand and raise their hand so they can be recognized. Then we're going to call to see if there's anyone here opposed to the case so they can be counted also. We would ask the opposition to also stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the record. Then after recognizing the applicant and any opposition, both parties will be asked to come forward so they can present testimony to the Board of Commissioners. The applicant will testify first and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process and there's not a process to re- reserve your time. So convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute timeframe. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after both sides have had their 10-minute presentation period, the Board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the Board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There is one case on today's agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice and this case will not be heard today. That's rezoning case Z-63 of 2021, Woodfield Acquisitions LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued by the staff of the Planning Commission and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-25 of 2021, the Furniture and Mattress Warehouse LP. This case was continued by the staff until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-25 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-38 of 2021, Winsong Properties. This case was continued by the staff until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-38 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-44 of 2021, Winsong Properties. This case was continued by the staff until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-44 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-48 of 2021, Ray Murphy. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the November 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-48 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-53 of 2021, Quintus Development LP. This case was continued by the staff until the October 19th, 2021 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z-53 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-54 of 2021, Chuck Owuzu. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-54 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-56 of 2021, Trayton LLC. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-56 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-57 of 2021, Stacy Bagwell. This case was continued by the staff until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-57 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-60 of 2021, TLM Realty. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-60 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-61 of 2021, Blue Tiger Properties LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-61 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-62 of 2021, Perimeter Construction Group LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-62 will not be heard today. LUP-19 of 2021, Linda Kennedy. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So LUP-19 of 2021 will not be heard today. SLEP-3 of 2021, Ray Murphy. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the November 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP-3 of 2021 will not be heard today. SLEP-7 of 2021, Blue Tiger Properties LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-25 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-38 of 2021, Winsong Properties. This case was continued by the staff until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-38 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-44 of 2021, Winsong Properties. This case was continued by the staff until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-44 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-48 of 2021, Ray Murphy. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the November 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-48 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-53 of 2021, Quintus Development LP. This case was continued by the staff until the October 19th, 2021 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Z-53 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-54 of 2021, Chuck Owuzu. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-54 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-56 of 2021, Trayton LLC. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-56 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-57 of 2021, Stacy Bagwell. This case was continued by the staff until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-57 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-60 of 2021, TLM Realty. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-60 of 2021 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-61 of 2021, Blue Tiger Properties LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-61 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-62 of 2021, Perimeter Construction Group LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-62 will not be heard today. LUP-19 of 2021, Linda Kennedy. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So LUP-19 of 2021 will not be heard today. SLEP-3 of 2021, Ray Murphy. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the November 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP-3 of 2021 will not be heard today. SLEP-7 of 2021, Blue Tiger Properties LLC. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the October 5th, 2021 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP-7 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 38 of 2021, Six M Properties LLC. This case was held by the Board of Commissioners until the October 19th, 2021 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Other Business Item Number 38 will not be heard today. And finally, Other Business Item Number 50 of 2021, Brandon Cove LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 19th, 2021 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. So Other Business Number 50 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn it off as the ringing does interfere with broadcasting presentations. And any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If they made a campaign contribution within the last two years in the amount of $250 or more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information concerning this announcement is located on the table in the back of the room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, and any interested party that information is due to this Board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the Board at their discretion. With that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for September 21st, 2021. First case on consent is LUP-20, Faygo Santos requests a temporary land use permit for outdoor photography in landlots 103 and 126 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Old 41 Highway, west of Kimberly Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LUP-20 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, final site plan submitted June 29th, 2021. Number two, maximum of two employees. Number three, one sign up to six feet, excuse me, up to six square feet. Number four, clients by appointment only with a maximum of three clients per day. Number five, fire department comments and recommendations. And number six, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP-20?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. LPSP-2 of 2021, Margarita Zazuda requests a limited professional services permit for a beauty shop in landlot 231 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Wendy Hill Road and on the west side of Charles Rogers Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval of LPSP-2, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on June 9th, 2021. Number two, approval is for this use, a beauty salon, and this applicant only. Number three, hours of operation be 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Number four, maximum of two employees. Number five, business only to be conducted in the house facing Wendy Hill Road. Number six, one sign up to 20 square feet along Wendy Hill Road. Number seven, applicant to reside in a home facing Charles Rogers Road. And number eight, all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Is there anyone here opposed to LPSP-2?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into Other Business Items on today's consent agenda is Other Business Item Number 44 of 2021. Is to consider a reduction of public road frontage on Lot 1 from 75 feet to 15 feet and from 75 feet to 0 feet on lots 2 through 4. Access on a gravel driveway and other setback variances for existing structures shown on the site plan for Irene Clackem, property located at the northern terminus of Trail Road, north of Midway Road, in landlot 311 of the 20th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, proposed site plan contained in the Other Business Packet with variances shown for gravel driveways and existing accessory structures with the District Commissioner approved and minor modifications. Number two, no further subdivision of this property. Number three, Cobb DOT comments contained in the Other Business Packet. Number four, fire department comments contained in the Other Business Packet. And number five, stormwater management, excuse me, number five, stormwater management comments contained in the Other Business Packet. And number six, water and sewer comments contained in the Other Business Packet. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 44? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And last on the agenda for Other Business, nope, there's two more. Item Number 46 of 2021, okay, is to consider a reduction of public road frontage from required 75 feet to 20 feet for Ashley Newman, property located on the south side of Liberty Hill Road, west of Morgan Road, in landlot 662 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to stormwater management comments, site plan review comments, and fire department comments contained in the Other Business Packet. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 46?
We have one.
We have one? Okay. Is the applicant here for Other Business Item Number 46? Madam Chair and Board, we're going to pull this off consent right now and we're going to get the applicant together with the person opposed. It's my understanding the person opposed wants more information about the proposal. So right now, we're going to pull that one off and put it on hold. Next case is Other Business Item Number 47 of 2021, which is to consider a stipulation amendment for PGA Traymore LLC regarding rezoning applications Z-21 and Z-22 of 2013 in landlot 861 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Traymore Point Parkway, southwest of the East West Connector. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, uses contained in Exhibit A except for number 16, distribution facility, which is deleted. Number two, all activity take place inside the buildings. Number three, no outdoor storage or outdoor displays of merchandise. Number four, Cobb DOT comments contained in the Other Business Packet. Number five, fire department comments contained in the Other Business Packet. And number six, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 47? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other Business Item Number 49 of 2021 is to consider a stipulation amendment for David Pearson Communities Incorporated regarding rezoning application Z-71 of 2020 in landlots 736 and 777 of the 16th District. The property is located at the north end of Ross Road, northwest of Sandy Plains Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, decal lane at the intersection of Ross Road and Sandy Plains Road to be deleted. Number two, Cobb DOT comments contained in the Other Business Packet. Number three, fire department comments contained in the Other Business Packet. And number four, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is there anyone here opposed to Other Business Item Number 49? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board. It's my understanding, though, that Commissioner Sheffield may want to add one more to consent.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Yes, Z-23, I'd like to add to consent and add a few stipulations.
So the first thing we have to do is have a motion to add it to consent. And then after that, we can make a motion to put the conditions on it.
I make a motion to add Z-23 to the consent agenda.
Any discussion? We'll call the question.
Excuse me, can, do you need to ask if anyone's here in opposition?
Is anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-23, 5912 Mabrydon Parkway?
Thank you, Commissioner.
And Commissioner Pearl, it's my understanding that they worked it out with the opposition. That's why it's going to be put on consent.
Pardon?
It's my understanding that the applicant has worked out some conditions with the person who was opposed, so that's why it's being put on consent.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Let me go ahead and read that into the record. Rezoning case Z-23 of 2021, 5912 Mabrydon Parkway LLC, request rezoning from NS CRC to CRC for a commercial retail establishment in landlot 78 of the 18th District. The property is located on the west side of Mabrydon Parkway, the north side of Old Patrick Springs Road, and south of Old Alabama Road. The applicant is present. There was no one opposed. So at this point, we would need a motion to approve with the conditions.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Z-23 with the following conditions. That the deletion from NRC is subject to the Planning Commission recommendation from September 7th, 2021. Any dead or damaged landscaping to be replaced within 90 days. The dumpster enclosure to be built within 120 days of the BOC zoning decision or before issuance of any business license or certificates of occupancy, whichever comes first. And that the sign stand and enclosures to be removed no later than October 21st, 2021. And that the end user to be approved by the District Commissioner and all other staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Is there any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Is there anything else that needs to be added to consent? And we know that one item has been pulled off.
Yes.
So with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised, recognizing that Other Business Item 46 has been pulled to the regular agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner?
Were the applicant and the opposition able to resolve anything to add that B-46 back?
They're speaking now. I can go get a note.
Okay. So can we wait and see?
I just asked that we go ahead and prove consent, but we can always add it back to consent during the meeting. So we're not waiting. Okay. So we have a motion, a second. Is there any additional discussion, Commissioner? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Those who are here for any items on the consent agenda, it has been passed except for Other Business Item 46, you are free to leave at this time unless you're here for any other case. And we'll go ahead and just take a few moments for those that do want to leave for the consent agenda so there's not any disruption to when we go into the other cases.
Okay.
Chairwoman, if I may, during this time during the transition, of course, the county is under currently a state of emergency regarding COVID restrictions. Part of that authorizes the Board, particularly in circumstances and zoning hearings, for you to allow for virtual participation by the citizens at those meetings. Of course, that has to be approved by the Board for them to be able to do that. That was not done prior to this meeting because that particular emergency order was not in place at that point in time. And I'm curious if the Board would entertain a motion to allow the October 19th BOC zoning hearing to allow virtual participation by staff as well as citizens. If it would, I'd like to be able to present an idea of a motion that could be then adopted by the Board.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented and we can have further discussion after the second if needed.
Okay. Of course, the meeting is being held live or will be held live at 100 Cherokee Street and have both applicants and public in attendance at that time. I suggest that during the emergency declaration, that you allow following changes to your zoning meeting rules for the October 19th, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. That is to allow staff and citizens to be allowed to participate in the meeting virtually. BOC members, if need be, can vote by voice or hand signal. The persons wishing to be counted as either in favor or in opposition to an application will be recognized and a number of those persons provided to the Board. Persons who wish to speak virtually in favor or in opposition to an application will identify themselves accordingly to an IAS technical staff for participation during the presentation of any application. And then allow persons to speak virtually, the persons who speak virtually will acknowledge and affirm that his or her testimony before the BOC is under oath or affirmed to be truthful. Otherwise, all other BOC meeting rules for the zoning hearings would be helped.
All right then. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes, Commissioner?
The next zoning meeting is October 19th. And doesn't the state of emergency expire the 17th of October?
It does. And this would be in case that if it is allowed to be continued for an additional 30 days prior to that point in time, obviously, if the declaration of emergency is not continued, then this would not be in place.
Okay. Can you add that language? If it's not extended, that we would do virtual?
If it's not extended, then you cannot do virtual, sure.
Okay. Thank you.
A question for clarification. Persons that wish to be counted but not speak, how would that take place?
What we did before, and mostly in this was in 2020 and early in 2021, we allowed the portal for IAS for them to be able to call in so they could be counted and recognized as being in opposition or in favor or proponent of the particular application. But they would then identify themselves whether they'd want to speak or not speak. Of course, they shouldn't extend the time for those people that would want to speak. They could either do so virtually or those people that'd be present here in the building would be able to speak as well.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
Zoning staff, if we go back to that, is it going to be an undue burden or we need to do this?
Well, the motion as read would allow the staff and citizens to be able to participate virtually. And that would include, some of the staff even today are located off-site in another room just to help us with socially distancing. So it allows that to be able to take place.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Commissioner?
Well, then it also sounded like you were going to have the commissioners possibly be off-site as well, or did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, I did not include BOC as part of that motion. Of course, it's y'all's motion.
Okay, well, because you said either by hand or signaling, so that's why I wasn't sure.
Well, I know they've recently set up the voting so that you could do from this other site, but if that doesn't take place, then they would have to be able to do so by hand.
Okay. And then what about the Planning Commission meeting?
The Planning Commission, they have their own rules whether they would allow them to be able to do that or not. They could vote on that.
And is that, I know we're two weeks out from that, so is that going to be a consideration that they can undertake to?
Sure. They're allowed to be able to do that if they want to do that. They have to do it at their next meeting to be able to vote for that.
Are there any additional questions or comments? All right, we have a motion, a second, and we'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. I might stay up here for the announcement of the next case and questions.
Okay. Moving into the pending case agenda, first case is rezoning case Z-28 of 2021, Press Wick Development Company LLC. The applicant is requesting rezoning from R-20.
Can we use some audio? We can hear back here. Do you want to turn the mic?
Hold on, hold on, please, that's...
Madam Chair, it's my understanding that the speakers in the back are broken. That's why they're not working?
Okay. For those who are in the back, the speakers in the back are broken from communications. Is there anything we can do to raise?
We're trying to adjust for audio, but of course, it causes feedback issues. So I'm trying to do best.
Okay. For those who can hear my mic, we've been trying to adjust the sound because the speakers in the back of the room are broken. However, when we've raised the sound up, it's caused feedback issues. So communications is trying the best that they can to ensure that there is adequate sound, but we'll just ask for everyone to speak up to the best of their ability.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, rezoning case Z-28 of 2021, Press Wick Development Company LLC, request rezoning from R-20 and NRC to R-12 for multifamily residential and retail in landlots 31 and 32 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of White Boulevard, on the west side of Floyd Road, at the terminus of Nickajack Road, and at the terminus of Green Valley Road. The applicant is present, Madam Chair and Board, and at the last hearing a month ago, this was a tied vote, 2 to 2, and the motion was to approve it. this was a tied vote, 2 to 2, and the motion was to approve it. So at this point, we will need a motion from the, or the vote from the chair to break the tie.
Thank you.
And I don't know if Bill wants to add anything to this.
To correct what John said, Chairman, you weren't here, unfortunately passing over your grandmother. The particular motion is pending before the board. The next action the board would have to take would actually be your vote on it. And then after that, it would either be approved or it would come back to the board.
And I have some questions, but it's my understanding that since the question has been called, I just need to vote that I can address the matter before the vote.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So the motion does not carry. It fails three, or two, three. So it's my presumption that there would need to be another motion offered.
Correct either another motion or further discussion by the board.
Okay. Yes, and I'll just share with the Commissioner, I certainly am in support of the project. I have questions about parking. It would have been my desire to have asked those questions prior to my vote, but I'm hoping that we can address that and then have a substitute motion offered.
Okay. Let me ask John. Or Bill, the Chair has a question with respect to parking. Can she ask those questions, or would I need to have the applicant to come up?
Yeah, the applicant can come up at this point in time. It's back before the board, and there's no motion, so it's further discussions.
Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Garvis Sams. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I had some questions with respect to the variance for parking. It was dropped significantly, and it's been my experience that for more dense development, that parking can sometimes become an issue. And my concern is that we don't have parking spilling over into the adjacent residential area. So I'm hoping you can address that. I would hate for the project not to move forward because of this, but I don't want the project to also create an additional burden if this isn't addressed.
No, certainly, I understand, Madam Chairwoman. The parking issue, I'm not going to get into presentation, I know this is a whole case, but the genesis of parking and the development generally began when this came out of the ground as a mixed-use development, which included a commercial component, a bank, a fast casual restaurant, a climate-controlled self-service storage facility, and then there was a piece of property that was held out for a couple of years. That's the property that's before you, approximately an eight-acre tract. But just to tell you, when the property was originally rezoned, it was parked at 237, excuse me, 230 spaces, and only 137 were required. So going into this, it was overparked. What we were asking for originally was a reduction in parking from 1.75 to 1.51. With the Planning Commission's action, which is a part of Commissioner Sheffield's motion to reduce that by another eight units, that would be at a 1.58 parking spaces per unit. What I did, or two things, since this was last held, realizing that parking may be an issue. Number one, I penned a letter to you and the District Commissioner stating that we would agree to a parking easement. There is not only ample and sufficient space, for instance, the climate control facility next door requires five parking spaces and has 56. The whole shopping area or the mixed-use development is overparked. Our master developer, Gerard Gunther of Corner Point Development, has got, has permission to be able to acquire additional parking spaces that are strategically positioned to accommodate us, but it's not going to be a reciprocity or reciprocal nature to it. It'll simply be the multifamily development being able to utilize those parks. But on top of that, Madam Chairwoman, I think even most importantly, over the past 21 months, essentially since COVID began, there have been eight different multifamily rezonings in Cobb County, and I looked at those in terms specifically with respect to parking ratios. And of those eight, the range is between 1.5 to 1.6. So every single multifamily development. And the reason for that is quite simply, the 80s and 90s are gone, the two- and three-bedroom demographics are not the demographics of today. So all of ours are one- and two-bedrooms. I think we have 5% three-bedrooms. So, and what Mr. Young of Presswick, who is here today, does is instead of taking an arbitrary number of 1.75, he takes the number of bedrooms and then replicates that in terms of the parking he uses. So we're agreeable to the parking easement, number one, and agreeable, I don't guess I can agree to actions that have already happened, but agree to submit this as evidence, if you like, Madam Chairwoman. But that would be our position on parking.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you addressing that, and I'd be amenable to supporting the application with that easement being included as part of the record.
Okay. So, Bill, would I make a substitute motion at this point?
It's not a substitute motion, just we would beat the motion.
Okay, all right. Well, I make a motion to approve zoning case Z 28. And I have stipulations to add to that, but do we discuss it first, or just?
All your steps.
Okay. I make a motion to approve Z 28 with the following stipulation, that Presswick Companies will enter into a parking easement agreement with the Climate Control Self-Service Storage Facility, or CCSF, prior to the issuance of any land disturbance permit regarding the subject property, and in addition to staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
We, there's plenty of spaces, and the Climate Control Self-Service Storage Facility is willing to participate, but so are the other users in there. So if you could broaden that, so we could be allowed to do the parking easement, but maybe draw from others as well that may be more strategically positioned.
Okay, so we'll include the parking easement agreement with Climate Control Self-Service Storage Facility and neighboring businesses.
Thank you, ma'am.
And this would have all of the other conditions and stipulations in effect beyond staff? Okay.
So the motion would, you need to go ahead and include all of that for your motion, which I agree last time was your letter, which for agreeable conditions from Garvis Sams dated June 24th, 2021. The final site plan to be approved by the District Commissioner. The total units not to exceed 188 units. Move the existing water line under the stormwater pond located at the south of the property. And then construction hours to be in compliance with the county code and nowhere conducted on Sunday. And then all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. So all those would be included in the motion.
Yes, sir, that is correct. Thank you.
All right, so it's a motion, I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Gamble?
So I understand you're going to do a parking easement to alleviate the reduction in parking, but I did not see any sidewalks to help people walk from the parking area safely to these buildings. So where is the safety aspect of this development with sidewalks?
From which, which building in particular, Commissioner?
From, you know, if you're going to use parking at the self-storage, where's the sidewalks to help people walk from that parking lot back to the building? The site plan that I saw put up didn't have sidewalks.
There's interior maneuverability sufficient, both from a pedestrian perspective and vehicular in terms of turning movements, but there's also sidewalks within the development itself. What you're looking at, anytime you're looking at a zoning level, you're looking at a conceptual plan that hadn't been through plan review yet, but there's parking and sufficient connectivity to parking spaces and sidewalks.
But is this being approved site plan specific? Correct? In your motion, you're approving this site plan specific. So with it being site plan specific, if the sidewalks are not shown on here, it does not mean that in site plan review that they can make the applicant go back and put in sidewalks? Because the board did not approve the site plan with sidewalks.
I think the motion, yeah, the motion before the board right now is the final site plan to be approved by the District Commissioner.
Thank you, Bill. Yes, Commissioner Burrow.
Is this, are you deleting this to RM 12, or are you just keeping it RM 12? But the units have been reduced to 188, which is how many units per acre now?
My question is, is it over the RM 12, 12 units per acre?
And we did have a recommendation from a citizen to delete it to UVC that would, you know, comply with the number of units, but I'm just asking if it's still RM 12 and how many units per acre?
It is still RM 12, and John will let us know how many, but the recommendation from the constituent would not be a good fit here because it requires additional detail, and I believe that John responded to that email to the constituent and copied all of us on it in greater detail.
Plus, I think, Commissioner, that particular constituent was under the impression that this was a mixed-use development, not an already developed, for the most part, mixed-use development.
I got 22.5 units per acre.
Commissioner, is the density changing from the last meeting? Is the density the same, or did you change it today?
It's the same.
It's the same, okay. Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any additional discussion? We'll go ahead and call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioners Gamble and Burrow in opposition.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Commissioner Sheffield.
Madam Chair and Board, it's my understanding that the one other business item we pulled off consent, they have come to an agreement with one condition or two conditions. So if it's okay with the board, I'm going to read this back into the, back into your meeting, and we can just make a motion to approve it or deny it, okay? All right. Other business?
Excuse me, John, just give me one moment so I can be clear on process. For the county attorney, do we have two motions that need to be passed? Is it to add it back to consent and then to approve it, or is it just to approve it?
Since we've already approved consent agenda, this will just be in isolation by itself, so.
Okay.
Okay. Other business item number 46 of 2021 is to consider a reduction in public road furniture from 75 feet to 20 feet for Ashley Newman for property located on the south side of Liberty Hill Road, West of Morgan Road. Property is located in land lot 662 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to, number one, stormwater management, site plan review, and fire department comments contained in the other business packet. Number two, site plan contained in the other business packet with no other houses permitted on this 4.65-acre lot. And number three, a barn is permitted to be built on this lot with the final site plan to be approved by the District Commissioner. Is that good? And the applicant and opposition are in agreement with these conditions, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow.
I make a motion to approve OB46 and add back to the consent agenda as revised.
We're just going to approve it since the consent agenda has already been approved. So we'll just make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve OB46 as revised.
Second, is there any further discussion? We'll go ahead and call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Next case, rezoning case Z 72 of 2020, North Point Ministries Incorporated requests rezoning from LRO, NRC, and R 20 to LRO, NRC, and FST for a church, retail, restaurant, townhomes, and single-family residential in land lots 466, 467, 470, and 471 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Charlotte Road, the west side of Johnson-Ferry Road, north and south sides of Waterfront Drive, and the east side of Waterfront Circle. The applicant is present. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to this case? Please stand up, raise your hands.
Keep your hands, please.
Ryan's counting in the room?
We're taking care of the overflow.
Ryan's counting in the room?
We're taking care of the overflow. As soon as we have a number, we will release the number.
Nine? Okay. Let the record show there's 46 people here in opposition to rezoning case Z 72 of 2020. Can I also get a show of people here who are in support of rezoning case Z 72? Please raise your hands and stand up for support.
Let's keep ordering here, please.
72 of 2020. All those folks wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Okay, John, I just want to share that I will need to recuse myself from this case just because of my affiliation with the church that is with North Point Ministries. So Commissioner Sheffield will run this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looks like I pulled the short straw again this morning for this case. But good morning, everyone. I hope everyone is in good spirits this morning. We are going to get started, and we'll have, okay, all right. Pardon?
We didn't hear the count.
Sure. John, may I repeat the count? Or, okay, there were 46 in opposition and 56 in support.
It is, it is my understanding that both the applicant and opposition have requested an additional five minutes to be added, and so wanted to know if that was amenable to the board, what the procedure is there.
I'm okay, I'm okay with the additional five minutes per side. I don't have an issue with that.
You can do it in form of a motion, and then vote on it in the additional time.
Okay. Motion to add five minutes for each speaker, both the applicant's side and the opposition's side.
Now you said each speaker, you mean the time slot in total.
Sorry, yes, the total, total for opposition, total for applicant, thank you.
Okay, okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Call a question, sorry. Motion passes 4 to 0. Good morning, Kevin. Thank you so much for joining us today. You may begin your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of North Point Ministries. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of North Point Ministries in this rezoning application. This was held after last month's presentation, and I'm here to present our application today and the changes that have been made, and give you some additional things, hopefully in your consideration of this rezoning. your consideration of this rezoning application as part of listening to the comments that were made last month and responding to those comments that were made last month. I'm going to move over to the zoning map now and show you a few things to kind of set the stage and context for our application at this point.
Turning now to the overall zoning map and area map, we have Johnson-Ferry Road, Shalford Road, and here's the Johnson-Ferry-Shalford Road intersection. We've highlighted in black the entirety of the 33, just over 33 acres. It's a part of this application, which is an assemblage of properties. Again, I want to point out to you very quickly, we made an emphasis of this last month and have made an emphasis of this every month, that this community around the Johnson-Ferry-Shalford Road intersection is more than simply a neighborhood of single-family detached homes. It is a community of a Publix, a community of a Kroger, a community of a Walmart, a community of a variety of out parcels, all zone GC or NRC, that include things such as a McDonald's, a Walgreens, oil change, a BP convenience store location at the corner. All of this is part of this community. In addition, as part of this community, we have an RA 6, which is a full townhome development of over 80 townhomes at six units per acre located adjacent to the Kroger and adjacent to the CRC pieces here, serving as a transition to the R 20 and R 15 neighborhoods beyond. We also have a suburban condominium. This is SC. This is almost five units per acre here, serving as a transition from the commercial that stretches along Johnson-Ferry to the R 15 and R 20 areas and neighborhoods beyond. Again, this is a community of several different types of uses, but what it is a community of certainly is one of land use principles that have been applied with these zonings in particular that show a transition from the intensity of this commercial to the less intensity of the single-family neighborhoods. Those are transitional uses, and those are zonings that have been accomplished within the last 20 years to accomplish that and provide these types of transitions to those neighborhoods. So when you consider the community, we would ask that you consider all of the community that is present in this, at this intersection, and not merely some of it as part of this application. Also, of important note, the future land use map for this property, the entirety of this 33 acres, is within a neighborhood activity center. That's a neighborhood activity center on the future land use map, which recommends neighborhood retail types of uses and commercial, other types of commercial uses. Specifically, though, a neighborhood activity center also includes uses such as low-rise office, office, and residential up to five units per acre. Going even further, there was a JOSH study that everyone has heard about. What did the JOSH study add to this particular intersection? It had specific recommendations for LRO along Shalford Road, specific recommendations on a macro kind of 50,000-foot level of commercial, NRC along Johnson-Ferry, and residential to the interior up to five units per acre, and including public or community-oriented green space that would be accessible as part of the JOSH plan, and including also certain design elements that would bring such a development together. Now you take both that neighborhood activity center, future land use plan designation, the further directives that are received from the JOSH plan study that was adopted, and now we turn to our site plan that we present to you today. Thanks. Turning to the site plan for today that we have presented and submitted, to orient you again, Shalford Road on your left-hand side, Johnson-Ferry Road along the top. What we are presenting for you today is, again, the North Point Ministries Church, the East Cobb Church, which will be located along Shalford Road. That acreage is proposed for LRO along Shalford Road. To have LRO, and you've seen and heard of all of the stipulations that the church has agreed to, reminds you again that a church is entitled to go here with no stipulations and without any zoning. But as part of having to acquire all 33 acres to locate here, the church has been very willing to engage with the community and have explicit stipulations and conditions as part of that stipulation letter, as well as design elements that incorporate all of that which is intended by the JOSH plan in terms of the streetscape along Shalford Road, and also in terms of having this entire section zoned LRO as part of this plan, consistent both with the neighborhood activity center designation and also consistent with the JOSH plan recommendations as well. In addition, it includes a park area here that is not only used for the church but will be accessible and available to the public for use as an additional park area along Shalford Road. And lastly, with a professional office building, which is the tutoring business here to be relocated and built in this location. As we move around to Johnson-Ferry Road, we have now proposed, instead of having residential with one small commercial parcel here, we are proposing this acreage along Johnson-Ferry be rezoned NRC. Keep in mind that about 2/3 of this property already is zoned NRC. There's a section in here that is currently zoned R 20. It just has never been converted to NRC for development, but we are proposing that this be zoned NRC for a small commercial development, having neighborhood, retail, restaurant, and the like type uses that would be consistent overall with this neighborhood and with this community. To the residential now, where we'll spend a good deal of time in discussion. The residential now is a total of 95 homes. That's a reduction from the prior application of last month of 100, from 125 to 95, a reduction of 30 total homes, having an overall net density of 4.9 units per acre, under five units per acre. So just from a 50,000-foot level, again, in terms of the neighborhood activity center designation and in terms of the JOSH study further designation, LRO consistent, NRC consistent, along Johnson-Ferry, residential consistent at less than five units per acre. In addition, we have the linear park, which we will be responsible for maintaining and creating with walking trails and the like throughout this area here, as well as connectivity to the park area here, all available and accessible to the public for their use and enjoyment, also consistent with the further JOSH plan directives and studies. All of that coming together as part of this plan. Also, what has been discussed as part of this plan, we have along this plan is a transition within our own property and within our own development, transition from these commercial out parcels, keeping in mind, this is the McDonald's, this is the Walgreens, oil change, and BP. We are transitioning within our property here with proposed townhomes, adjacent to all commercial existing and proposed uses from townhomes to single-family detached homes. There's a total of 44 proposed townhomes and a total of 51 proposed detached, single-family homes. Within that detached, single-family homes transition that I've spoken of, we transitioned from townhomes to detached homes on smaller lots, to detached homes on larger lots, all against and adjacent to existing residential. And finally, the two homes that will remain and be either renovated or rebuilt, but on R 20 lots, so that we complete that transition within our own development from the commercial to the R 20 by transitioning through those residential types of products and uses. Also, what has been discussed specifically is that the number of variances. You're going to hear that phrase, "Oh, well, there's a number of variances. There's this many variances that are included with this proposed plan." And yes, when we are proposing RA 5, RA 5 allows for townhomes, and it allows for single-family detached homes. Under RA 5 zoning code and ordinance, when you have detached homes, it requires certain lot sizes and lot widths. If you have attached homes like townhomes, it does not. So what we have done, though, is in trying to strike the balance that we have been trying to strike for nearly a year now, yes, we have variances, but they are proposed interior to our development, not to the exterior of the development that you can see. And those variances are contained within those, that section. But regardless, this entire residential development is enclosed with private streets and served with private streets. Those variances are only necessary because we have tried to meet the concerns expressed by the community. When we originally proposed this plan, it was 125 townhomes. It was all townhomes, and that was not supported by the community. So we backed to having detached homes, but that does require variances for us. If we simply attached them by a wall along the front, each, take every two and attach them by a wall, we would not need a variance. If we asked for this as suburban condominium, like was done just south of us, we would not need a variance for those categories. So what we're trying to do, though, is present a plan, be transparent in that, and where that comes from, but present a plan that overall strikes a balance. I would ask you to consider, when you hear about variances in opposition discussion or in criticisms, think of it this way: It is simply clanging cymbals and loud gongs that signify nothing as part of this development. What is part of this development is less than five units per acre as proposed. We understand as part of that density reduction and as part of what we have agreed to, that net density will come, if there's any floodplain, to be determined through a very detailed process with the Core and Cobb County Stormwater Development, Stormwater Division. If there is any floodplain that is determined at that time, we will have to reduce our unit count, and we will have to take out townhomes. That's what we have said in our stipulation letter, and we're certainly more than happy to and agreeable to bring such a site plan back to this board under the business if necessary, because what we are trying to do is ensure that this board and this community knows what we are doing and planning at all times, and that's what we have done in this case as well. Also, what has occurred with this plan is we are not showing a connection to waterfront, waterfront circle. Currently, waterfront drive, which runs from Johnson-Ferry and circle and kind of snakes through the residential portion of this proposed development, and then connects waterfront circle through the two detached, two large lots we have on the bottom of your screen, we are proposing that that section of waterfront drive be abandoned. In the prior version, in prior plan from last month, we were able to accommodate a new and relocated waterfront drive. We have removed that from this plan because we were given comments and direction, and part of our negotiations and our responsiveness to comments is to remove that road, given the criticism and comments that have been received from that, and simply propose that it be abandoned. We have provided a traffic study that mirrors this arrangement and this concept. We submitted a traffic study in January, the first week of January of this past year, when our original plan had this basic same concept, that is, the abandonment of waterfront drive with no additional connection to Johnson-Ferry, with a church, NRC, retail along Johnson-Ferry, and residential, but it was 125 townhomes. That traffic study was in detailed fashion, was submitted to DOT the first week of January of 2021. Importantly, it did note that the neighborhood that is consistent with, was called Marlanta in general terms, does have connectivity to both Elastor Road and Shalford Road and can therefore easily get to Johnson-Ferry, as opposed to going directly along waterfront drive, which would be removed. The conclusion of that traffic study was, if all the system improvements that are recommended, those are system improvements recommended to Cobb County, whether this is built or not, as well as the project improvements which we have adopted and as part of our, part of our presentation. If those are all built, then the intersections that were studied, and there were seven separate intersections studied, will all operate at acceptable levels, understanding what acceptable levels are of service may not be something that's necessarily acceptable to you and I that is, there's traffic, there's traffic at this intersection. But with those improvements that would occur, it would improve even with this built condition. Primarily, that's because you're taking all of this property and making it a church. Half of this property nearly would be a church, which is one of the most low-intense uses you could have at this intersection, and which we think is absolutely critical in your consideration of this application. We are proposing NRC, commercial along Johnson-Ferry. That's exactly what's along Johnson-Ferry, both from the intersection of Shalford Road and Johnson-Ferry, all the way down, past our property and beyond Elastor Road, and then beyond that. And what we are proposing now is 95 homes on the balance of this property, 95 homes. There's more than 80 townhomes on the backside of Kroger. That's all that's being proposed at this point, is a church, 95 homes, and commercial along Johnson-Ferry. This is a fantastic plan. It was a fantastic plan last month, but we believe that this plan, again, strikes the proper balance between assembling this property and building and creating a development at this location that is needed for this location without being inconsistent with the whole and the entirety of the community. And with that, we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Opposition, may approach. And remember, you have 15 minutes to divide among all that will speak. And when you approach the mic, would you mind sharing your name, please?
Good morning. My name is Ruth Michels, and I'm a longtime resident of the Marlanta subdivision and also represent the waterfront subdivision, the estates of Chimney Lakes and Chimney Lakes subdivision. It's apparently now time for me to bang my gong and call for the lack of support for the development proposed by North Point Ministries. We oppose this development and reserve our constitutional rights as property owners to challenge any approved rezoning as infringing upon our rights as property owners. This application has been in the planning stages for over nine months. We were before the planning commission at least four times, and now this is our second time before the Board of Commissioners. As stated numerous times, we want this area developed, but it needs to be the right development. What the applicant has proposed, yet again, is not that and does not follow the code for the RA 5 category requested by Commissioner Richardson. The eight previous site plans submitted include two at RM 8, then two at FST, then four at RA 6, with three changes in acreage, all resulting in very little movement in units per acre. It appears that the applicant is shopping for a zoning classification that will fly. The truth is that neither the Board of Commissioners nor the community will know what will be developed until after the FEMA flood study is completed. The applicant's statement in the stipulation letter about a site plan-specific development referencing the plan he has submitted is presumptuous. Is the Board of Commissioners willing to allow staff and the applicant to decide what is appropriate on this property? Is it reasonable to expect the community to accept a revised site plan sight unseen? Where is the transparency? We are requesting a stipulation that the revised site plan come back to the Board of Commissioners as another business item. We have repeatedly expressed our concerns about the intensity of this development, which has insufficient pervious surface, resulting in a negative impact on stormwater management. The percentage of impervious surface as a whole is critical on this piece of property to prevent flooding on-site and to ensure that there is no resulting flooding on Johnson-Ferry Road in adjoining neighborhoods and downstream. For the LRO portion, where the church will be, the maximum permitted impervious surface is 70%. With a 10.27 acre tract of land, this means that three acres must be pervious surface. It isn't clear whether there is in fact three acres of pervious surface, especially given the extraordinary amount of parking that is proposed for the LRO tract. For the NRC portion, where the unnamed parcels will be developed, the maximum permitted impervious surface is again 70%. With a 3.7 acre tract of land, this means that one acre of pervious surface is required. Based on the new proposed site plan, it doesn't appear that there is any pervious surface on this tract of land. And then finally, for the residential portion, currently requested for RA 5, the maximum impervious surface shall not exceed 40%. With 19.08 acres of property, that means that at least 11.448 acres must be pervious surface. The requested RA 5 zoning and the development as proposed is not appropriate for this site. While the density reflected on the site plan is 4.98 units per acre, this is a disingenuous calculation. First, the applicant continues to assume that there will be no floodplains or wetlands, but the applicant includes in the calculations the existing creek bed and buffers. Second, the applicant continues to include the two lots comprising a full acre that will remain zoned as R 20, so technically are not really even part of this development. If that one acre is subtracted out, the resulting net density is 5.25 units per acre, in excess of what is required for RA 5. In addition to the foregoing, the proposed site plan does not conform to the RA 5 zoning requirements, resulting in a total of 117 variances, the majority of which relate to lot size. Detail on this was sent to you in an email earlier this week. These variances result in many of the "single-family" homes really just being glorified townhomes. The sheer number of variances requested should be enough on its face to justify denial of this application as presented. Finally, the updated proposed site plan closes waterfront drive. While some may be in favor of this, as it will reduce cut-through traffic, others, particularly those on waterfront circle, are adamantly opposed to the closure of waterfront drive. There has been no public hearing on this potential closure. The applicant is assuming that Cobb County DOT and Fire and Safety will simply allow the closure. Regardless of the outcome of such a hearing, a public hearing is required and has not happened. In short, as Commissioner Richardson has stated in other contexts... In short, as Commissioner Richardson has stated in other contexts, the people who are most impacted have not been listened to and we can't solve anything when people aren't talking to each other. We respectfully request that Application Z72 2020 as presented be denied. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Bruce. I live on Banner House Drive. We believe it is the right of the public to know how controversial cases are being handled such as Z72. I will share a few emails of interest received after an open records request and will enter them into the record, enter the remainder into the record. On February 2nd, Planning Commissioner Wabright emails Mr. Moore, the attorney for the applicant. What happens if Z72 is truly zoned like a mixed use for PVC? What would it mean for calculating unit density? Everyone will see it as a dodge, but does it get past any issues of how many acres of swampland are not counted? Mr. Moore replies, "Such language is helpful but does not have effect on how the density is calculated in our case. The floodplain is not established as we have removed the lake." Code requires floodplains to be removed in density calculations. We are still waiting for determination from FEMA. On February 3rd, another email from Planning Commissioner Wabright to Mr. Moore. See attached, "These have been sitting around waiting for Josh folks to get together and create design guidelines. Z72 should not be delayed six months waiting for a committee. The Josh plan was two years in the making and intended to be the residence vision and not that of the developer." On February 5th, Planning Commissioner Wabright says to Mr. Moore, "Plenty of the usual rhetoric that does not even bear a response. What I really love is what is missing, not a single comment yea or nay about waterfront," which, as we know from what Ruth has said, has been a public road for 50 years and has not had a public hearing. On April 3rd, Planning Commissioner forwards Mr. Moore an email from the community member and Kevin Moore replies back with, "While we probably are very agreeable to the vast majority of the additional stipulations, what are we getting in exchange? That says it all." So that brings me to my final concern about the precedent. Land investors often come in and outbid the normal suburban home buyers to poach these older homes from everyday people. Then they sell it to a developer who builds townhomes for lucrative profits. Whatever precedent is being set today will be set for any future developer in our area and surrounding areas. I just want what's best for my neighbors and I don't think that this is it. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Chris Lindstrom and represent the East Coast Civic Association.
Excuse me, Ms. Lindstrom.
Come closer.
Would you mind?
How about this?
Okay. And if I may say this, we are all aware that we have issues, we're having audible issues. So give us and the speaker an opportunity to approach the mic before we start screaming from the audience, please. Thank you.
My name is Chris Lindstrom. Good morning. I represent the East Coast Civic Association. And Jill Flam, who cannot be here this morning, is the case manager for Z72. I have distributed to you and to Mr. Moore a copy of a complete presentation as my intention is to save on time. The detail that I will skip are in blue. Many meetings were held this year with new site plans, various renderings, and several concerns consistently surfaced. An all-town home plan for the residential development would not be supported by any of the neighbors and as the density and intensity of the development is a major concern. The closing of Waterfront Drive had people for and against it, seemingly in equal amounts, but I'm seeing that that may change today. Traffic on Johnson Ferry Road was also a major concern. The August 11th site plan addressed these concerns. The rerouting of Waterfront Drive was included in the plan with various devices, looked into and limitations created to discourage additional traffic. Townhomes replaced three of the four parcels along Johnson Ferry Road, reducing the amount of traffic on Johnson Ferry and the Johnson Ferry-Shallowford Road intersection. And while the density of that plan was 5.6 acres, units per acre, measures were taken to reduce the intensity. For example, all single-family houses had 15 feet between the units, increasing the size of these lots. The latest site plan dated September 14th seemed to be a step backward from the August plan. The applicant has closed Waterfront Drive and now both Waterfront Drive, Waterfront Circle and Marlanta's residents will have to drive through Marlanta's subdivision, circle around the Z72 property to access the local commercial services on Johnson Ferry Road, which will increase their commute time and traffic. There are now four NRC, we're back to four NRC parcels along Johnson Ferry Road with no limitations. When developed, these will generate more traffic than townhomes would have generated. While the intensity of the residential area is now at 4.98 units per acre, the intensity has increased along with the number of variances needed. Only 12 of the 49 single-family homes will have 15 feet between the units. That is 24% and that means that 76% of the lots will require variances for RA5. None were required in the previous plan. 71% of the total lots will require variances for the lot size. This was reduced in the previous plan due to the 15 feet between the houses. And we'd like to know, when did we stop adhering to codes and rely on the variances? With only 10 feet between homes, the development will appear very intense. They will look like detached houses, not something found in this area but more common in a rack or a city. ECCA reported the site plan, supported the site plan in stipulation letter dated August 11th along with the additional stipulations read into Commissioner Richardson's motion. While most of our recommendations were incorporated into the last stipulation, some were left off and we respectfully asked that they be included. And these stipulations were recommended by both Commissioner Richardson and ECCA, shown in blue on my handout affecting sections of the LRO development, RA5 development, NRC development along Johnson Ferry Road. So ECCA cannot support this new site plan. We feel that the plan proposed at the BOC hearing on August 17th along with all the additional stipulations added by Commissioner Richardson was a better fit for the area. And while the density is one part of the zoning category, the intensity is the other part to be considered. This latest site plan is much more intense than the August site plan and we continue to support the August 11th site plan without variances. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Thea Powell and I have been a resident in Chimney Lakes.
Excuse me, Ms. Powell. Ms. Powell, excuse me. Would you mind just stepping a little closer to the mic over here? Ms. Powell. I'm sorry. There you go. Please. Is it? Bill? Can we just recap the procedures and protocol from audience participation, please?
You need to make sure the time is timed.
Stop her time, please. We can't continue to deal with the yelling and shouting.
Yeah, I have. Yeah. I mean, decorum is probably the most important part of our meeting and so that we're always trying to conduct the meeting where everyone is heard in a manner which is respectful to each other's positions. And so when each speaker comes up, if they're able to get as close as they can to the microphone, hopefully they're able to hear it. I'm holding this one as close as I can to my mouth where hopefully people can hear me in the back of the room. And we'd ask that they not participate in the meeting so they're disrespectful to others.
Thank you. And if I would ask, if I can ask again, please, no shouting. Please do not yell and tell anyone to remove their mask or put one on if you're socially distanced. Please. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. Beginning in May, the applicant was requesting RA6 and the zoning staff comments were still for FST and have continued with that category up to today. So when the commissioner makes a motion to include staff comments, the zoning staff comments are still for FST and are irrelevant to the plan that has been presented and all the other plans that have been presented by the applicant. And I just wanted to make you all aware of that and I will be submitting those analyses into the record. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is David Rumril and I also live in Chimney Lakes and have been involved in this for the last nine months. Most of the comments that the other speakers have made, I am fully in support of, so I'll make my remarks much briefer. In general, I think the LR tract is okay, but I want to make sure there's enough room left on the south side of Shallowford Road for the envisioned third lane, which would allow two straight-through lanes on eastbound on Shallowford. I do support that the residential tract meet all RA5 zoning requirements. I think it's disingenuous to include the R20 lots in the density calculation. They're even going to be fenced off from this development. As regards Waterfront Circle, Waterfront Drive, if a consensus can't be reached, it is a public road. It has been there. Leave it where it is. Let the developer work around it. He knew it was there when he decided to buy the property. I would like to see the townhomes be, always be less than the single-family homes, at a ratio of about 60% single-family, 40% townhomes. I'm okay with the transition along Johnson Ferry Road and then the interior needs to be the single-family, but keep that ratio up, keep the RA5 requirements in place. And then we will not have a cluttered, crowded-looking neighborhood. We'll have a decent-looking neighborhood. Oh, one last time.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Driveways.
Thank you. We have concluded hearing from the presenting attorney and opposition and I will turn things over to you, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, thank you so much and thank you, everyone, for your comments. Really, just one comment to say, really appreciate the focus, due diligence that all parties have put into this particular case. With that, I'd like to call Amy up. Thank you, Amy.
Amy Diaz, Cobb DOT.
Thank you. So I know that you've had a short period of time to take a look at the new site plan that has come in and just wanted to ask you a few questions regarding what the office perceives and just also wanted to reference a comment made by Attorney Moore on a previous traffic study that was completed with higher intensity, higher density, and that road removal. So let's start with the first set. What impact do you perceive and has there been adequate time to come with an impact analysis of the removal of that road?
No, there has not been significant time to, sufficient time to do so. This was the original submittal, as I mentioned, but the site plan that removed it again was not submitted until the 15th of this month. And so we've had it for a little less than a week. We have not had time to do the review.
Okay. And I know that staff have provided some commentary. Perhaps you can just share that with the public on what, if, I know there have been comments about a public hearing on the removal of a road. Maybe there's some extra information you could provide in terms of process?
So that, I mean, any abandonment has to go through the Board of Commissioners, so there is a public hearing portion of the process. If the abandonment was allowed and went through, then there would be a public hearing for it. As far as the process for dealing with connectivity of the roads, Cobb DOT's policy is to keep connectivity because of both having additional routes for any emergency situation, public safety concerns, and just for the robustness of the roadway network. So we do have concerns about the closing of Waterfront Drive that have not yet been addressed.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up question. So on the topic of the closure, as we have, has been stated several times, the community is pretty much split on whether or not it should be there or shouldn't be there, but what it really comes down to is the connectivity is desired, the cut-through traffic is not. And so on the topic of cut-through traffic and mitigating cut-through traffic, what were some of the mitigation strategies that were considered? For instance, four-way stop signs, speed bumps, et cetera?
The Marlanta neighborhood itself has speed humps, so that is an existing condition. We did have somebody in traffic operations go out and inspect the speed humps to make sure that they were still in good shape so that they were operating acceptably. They also did some traffic volume counts and some speed study while they were out there. And so using that information, there's not a current issue identified in that area, but obviously it's a high profile, something that we keep an eye on.
Okay. And so, yeah, with traffic flow-through in general, if there were to be the, going back to having that road there but having in our C lots, the increase in traffic would be something that would certainly have to be studied as well, correct?
Yes, so there are four versions of the traffic study out there, so it gets difficult when you talk about what needs to be studied and what doesn't. If they return to the previous site plan, then they'll return to a previous traffic study. So we would have to see where we are and if there are any questions that are still outstanding at that point.
Okay. And then another thing that came up in some of the comments is with regards to when the traffic study was conducted and whether or not it was truly a representative sample, especially during COVID. We know that traffic patterns have been impacted, so just wanted to give you the chance to provide some clarity around how adjustments are made so that we know that the traffic studies that we do conduct are representative.
Yes, so the traffic study, what they, what we do when we're using COVID volumes is that we use historical counts in the area to adjust those volumes up to a pre-COVID condition estimate, so that that is taken into account in a traffic study.
Thank you. That concludes my questions for Amy. Do you all have additional questions?
Amy, with the revised site plan, with the commercial or NRC along Johnson Ferry and I think 34, 35 townhomes removed, is, how does that impact traffic? Or do we have a traffic study with the commercial?
No. We have a traffic study from January that did not have, that did show Waterfront Drive as disconnected. However, a new site plan was submitted in February and so we had, we had given some verbal feedback on the site plan and the traffic study, but we had not provided comments because we knew a revised site plan was coming that reconnected Waterfront and so it was going to require a new traffic study. We have, we have submitted comments on the traffic study, different versions of it, in March and in May. So going back to the January traffic study does not take into account any of the comments that DOT has made on previous iterations. So that's one concern. There has been an email that did a trip generation comparison between the last traffic study and the current site plan. It shows that the AM traffic is a little bit less, but the PM and the Saturday are a little bit more. It's comparable traffic. But one of the issues is that traffic will use different driveways depending on where it is in the development. When you take out residential, that's using primarily one driveway, and you put in commercial that's adding, using another, then you shift your traffic. it's adding, using another, then you shift your traffic volumes around, even if the overall trip generation is roughly the same. So that is one of the things that they would need to correct in a revised traffic study.
Okay. And then, public safety and DOT's recommendation is to leave Waterfront Drive open and connected to Waterfront Circle?
At this time, that is our recommendation, yes.
Waterfront Drive and Waterfront Circle, could that be a four-way stop if the road goes back to being connected? There are speed humps there to slow people down, but is, I know there's a four-way stop at Marland, or three-way stop at Marlanta Manor House in Waterfront, but is there a certain distance between four-way stops that there has to be, or would that help with the cut-through traffic and slowing people down?
So it's not really a distance. There, there is a distance between intersections that we have recommended, no matter what kind of traffic control there is. But what it is with all-way stops is there are warrants, sort of like signal warrants that we talk about more frequently. All-way stops have certain volume thresholds as well. I don't know that that intersection has or has not ever been looked at for a four-way stop, but that's certainly something that we can incorporate when we look at the, a revised study.
Okay.
I would certainly like to have that included in the study.
If I may ask a question also. With the four-way stop, if that's not feasible, can we consider a two-way stop?
Well, it would be existing condition, the intersection would be a side-street stop.
Okay.
So that would definitely be the case. If it was connected through, if it's a four-leg intersection, the options are either stop the side streets or stop all approaches.
Okay, thank you.
And there's currently stops on Waterfront Circle, but not Waterfront Drive.
Correct.
But a four-way stop would be the whole intersection.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Any other questions?
So the applicant knew, back if I'm recalling correctly, in February, that staff did not want Waterfront Drive closed?
They knew that we had concerns about that, yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm a little surprised, then, that it's closed on this application. So when are we going to determine if we are going to allow them to close Waterfront Drive or stick with staff recommendations to leave it open? Because that's going to impact the next site plan that's going to come forward. So when will that determination be made and communicated to the applicant?
Well, it depends if you, if you want to pursue having the Waterfront Drive closed as an option, then they do need to provide the updated traffic study that shows the traffic impacts, and then DOT would require them to mitigate all impacts that are caused by that closure. Public safety fire is here. I would recommend you talk to them about their concerns, because their concerns are not addressed by intersection improvements the way ours are.
Okay, and I understand that, but I guess we also have the other issue of if we're going to close this road, when are we going to conduct the public hearing? And are you going to, planning on doing that prior to the zoning decision, or are you looking to do that after the zoning decision?
Correct. This is a part of my process question.
So when an abandonment is necessary because of a zoning application, generally what happens is that it goes through the zoning process, assuming the abandonment will take place. However, before they can go through the plan review process, they must have the abandonment. All of that must be resolved, including the public hearing portion. So if they got to the public hearing and were not able to get the abandonment, they, they have not proceeded with construction, because they have not proceeded in the site plan, plan review process.
Okay, so it's a part of review?
Yes. Well, it has to be completed before review can happen. So it is in between zoning and plan review, but it is an important step that has to happen before a final site plan can be considered.
Thank you.
I have a question, a follow-up question for Amy. Has the county in the past, has the county ever closed a road or abandoned a road as a form of mitigation for traffic? In what instances would the county typically abandon a road?
There have been, there has been one instance in recent memory of us ever closing a road, and it was because it was, it was studied thoroughly, and it did not serve a public purpose any longer. That is, the code requires that we, we make sure that it's in the public's best interest to have the road be closed, and that it would not negatively impact the traveling public.
Okay, but it was not to mitigate traffic, is what I'm-
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right. So I did have some questions for John. The first is a comment that came up about FST being referenced in staff comments, and wondering if in, in motions in general, if when stating any stipulations not otherwise in conflict with staff comments, does that accommodate that, or is that something that actually has to be addressed?
Well, in order to address Ms. Powell's comments, I believe it'd be okay to delete zoning staff comments that reference FST, since they're not asking for it anymore.
Okay. Thank you. And then another question, so something that came up in previous versions, or previous discussions about this plan was the amount, the available parking and what was compliant with code, and not sure if Amy as well would be able to add anything to this, but wanted to know if with this new plan, and I'll ask Kevin as well to talk a little bit about it, but if you've seen any changes along that with, or any variances or requirements there on that front.
Is that regarding the guest parking?
Mm-hmm.
It's my understanding there are no variances to guest parking, so he's going to have to meet that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions for John?
Not for John, but I have one for either David Braden or Carl Carver, if he's here.
Okay.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Hi, Carl, thank you. There has been discussion of floodplain and the draining of the lake, and the comment was made that since the lake was drained, the floodplain has been removed. Isn't there some type of remediation that they have to do when they remove a lake or such? Can you explain a little bit more on that?
Not necessarily remediation. They will provide a study, along with their FEMA study that we will send to FEMA, that redefines the floodplain. And as far as any kind of mitigation, it's usually pertaining to wetland areas.
So when you say redefine the floodplain, does that floodplain redefinition have to occur on their site, or do they essentially defer it to another location?
No, it would have to be redefined on their site.
Other questions for Stormwater? Okay, thank you. All right, Attorney Moore. Thank you. For clarity's sake, what would be the impact of a FEMA study coming back with additional Or with floodplain?
Right. Once that detailed, lengthy process and study is completed, it, to the extent it comes back with floodplain being defined and identified on our site, which is what would happen, per our agreed-upon stipulations and conditions, we are agreeing to net density, maximum net density as stated in our letter, as defined by Cobb County Code. At that point, then, taking into account any floodplain acreage, it would result in a reduction of the total number of units, the total number of homes we are proposing, and we further agreed that that reduction would occur by removal or reducing the number of townhomes. So that's what would happen, whether it's .5 acres or five acres that come back, then we would have to reduce in accordance with that.
Okay. And just on that note, since variances are a big part of this conversation as well, would it then be something, seeking variances in order to sustain the same number of units, meaning changes and setbacks?
We would not be proposing to increase or the number of, quote, the number of variances. Again, that's why we've agreed that the, the number of townhomes would come, would have to be reduced if there was a reduction. So it doesn't affect any of the other aspects of the proposal whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Next question, what drove the removal of the road?
What drove the removal of the road?
Just in general, generally speaking, we're not doing names here. It's just the idea of, what were some of, what was some of the input that came in about the removal of the road?
There was, as a result of several comments, generally speaking, we had received, you know, we had proposed that relocation of Waterfront Drive, which was the result of discussions that had occurred over a number of months, as an accommodation of balance, where we would, we would, we would do that. We would have a new public road, Waterfront Drive, and relocate it to a different signalized intersection at Johnson Ferry. However, that proposal constantly met with criticism and comment that it wasn't needed about cut-through traffic and restricting our, restricting use of what would be a new public road. What was desired and what consistently came out through comments being made during all the number of public hearings was, how can we restrict that road so that only Marlanta residents can use it and nobody else can? And that's not what a public road is for. Additionally, you know, as we move through the process, it's a very, it is an expensive road. As we moved through this process and came back to this conclusion that the road was serving to harm our project more than it was to benefit it and harm the perception of the project more than it was to benefit it. So you look at it from that analysis, and ultimately, with all that wrapped in, we removed the road at that point in time. Again, you can see it's been a, it's that connection, whether it's left as is, or whether there's a new road put in, or whether there's no road, creates a divisive issue. So that's where that came from, from our standpoint. Because if you leave it as it is, understanding that now becomes a public road that's through a middle of a residential portion of an overall development, and it creates issues in terms of how do you create a new development with that existing road when you have property on either side of it? It just, it creates development and home marketing issues that are involved with that when you're trying to create a new residential development. So we've been trying to reach a balance since day one on that.
Okay, thank you. And then, follow-up question on that is when, when making this change in this plan iteration, had there been any consideration of public safety comments?
Yes, primarily based on our initial traffic study that was done, that I referenced earlier. The Waterfront Drive currently serves as a connection road. It serves to provide access to the parcels that are comprised of this assemblage of 33 acres, number one, and it connects Johnson Ferry to what people generally call Marlanta. And, but also, that same neighborhood, Marlanta, has direct connectivity to both Lassiter Road and Shallowford Road. Their, that neighborhood connects to both roads through other streets, which both connect to Johnson Ferry. So from our standpoint, and as pointed out in our traffic study, the connectivity for Marlanta residents remains there. They still connect to, it's not as if they're being cut off. Their connectivity remains. So we did not see an issue from a public safety standpoint, because there remains still multiple app, multiple ways to, to connect to those major roads.
Okay. And what were some of the mitigation strategies you were considering for, for cut-through?
From the prior proposal that had the, when we had the road included, what we had proposed was, certainly we had some, there were traffic conditions as it related to when church occurred on Sundays, to help with and mitigate against cut-through traffic coming through that new proposed relocated road. In addition, we had our residents that were accessing the new road also, that's not the main entrance. It was a gated entrance at that location. It would not be something that would have been, you know, used in that regard. There was also suggestions, which we were very willing to do in terms of the, the new relocated road, had parallel parking along it, which is a, a device that uses to not only slow down traffic, but help prevent cut-through. There was also some other ideas that had actually been proposed during the hearing last month that we were open to in terms of things that you can do in the road with landscaped islands and so forth and so on, that help to mitigate cut-through, which we were perfectly happy with as well.
Okay. And then last question that I have for you was guest parking, if with this change in the plan, was there, were there further changes on that front?
Yeah, our guest parking that we've provided meets the minimum of the, exceeds the minimum. I think it actually exceeds the minimum required.
Thank you. All right. Opening the floor. Go ahead, Commissioner Pearl.
Thank you. First of all, if y'all recall, at our last meeting, there was a two-two tie, and we had to hold it for further discussion. And I believe Commissioner Gamble and I, and you have talked with or met with Mr. Moore during that time to see what could be done. So I was looking at the connection from Shallowford all the way through to Waterfront, with a lot of emails and complaints on cut-through traffic. When this was in my district, we had a lot of complaints on cut-through before any development, you know, like this went in or was proposed. So what I didn't realize in cutting off that connection from Shallowford was the closure of Waterfront from Johnson Ferry, which I don't support closing that at this time. So, and with fire, fire and public safety and, and DOT's recommendation not to close it, I don't, I don't support that. So we may need to hold this and look at another traffic study or, and see what connectivity we can do and other improvements, such as the four-way stop that I suggested and get it, get with DOT. But, but we've got to keep Waterfront open with connection for the people in Waterfront Circle and Drive.
Right. And, and I also echo those sentiments, Kevin, and I understand the reason why there's a desire to cut it off, but for me, I'm concerned about access to services for people that live along that road, and in the event there are emergencies, fire, ambulance, medical emergencies, I just don't want to delay any services to residents along that corridor. And, you know, they're, they're public roads, and I think that there needs to be other ways to mitigate the cut-through traffic. And I'm always cautious of eliminating or cutting a road without a substantially good reason, and for me, this is not, this is not one of those.
Might I, could I respond just to, I don't want to respond directly, but just to add to that conversation, that would be-
Sure. Go ahead.
Sir, and we, we hear those comments, and that's, you know, why we had developed a plan that relocated the road to what we believe was a better location in terms of cut-through, just overall, where that connects is better, because it, it doesn't add much from a cut-through standpoint if you relocate it in that direction. It also, that's what that plan represented, was that, that balance and compromise. You know, as we- You know, as we look at the, if that's what we're doing, then we're happy to do that. We've, we've looked and we've tried and we'll continue to look and try. But I hope that folks will understand and you will understand, you know, as we look at this, it's, you know, it's like an ice cream cone. If you just keep pushing on different things, it's, it's just gonna, we have to reach a balance overall. You know, if you just squeeze the ice cream cone, the ice cream's just gonna fall out. So we're, we will continue to look. But that's, we, we, we hear those comments about the connectivity with Waterfront Drive and that's why we had that road and there was also some other things that went with that. But, you know, we'll continue to look if that's what we need to do.
Okay, Kevin, just clarification on a couple of things. Your townhome removal?
Yes.
With if, if floodplain and how much is determined? Are you talking it would be the, the attached ones, the detached ones? Can you just kind of clarify that? I know you had offered to bring back the revised site plan once the floodplain was determined and homes were removed. And it sounded like opposition supported that. So I hope that's a, a condition you will include on this going forward because it sounds like we're heading for a hold. But can you just clarify which would be removed or if it could be a combination?
Sure. What, what we had proposed and what's in our stipulation letter this month and what was in our stipulation letter the last month and before that, just to clarify, because that hasn't changed what we've agreed to there. And that is if there's floodplain determined and defined through those studies, which, which means we'll have to reduce the number of total homes that are proposed here, that's why it's a maximum of 95, for example, then any reduction in homes as a result would be the townhomes, that is the attached homes. So that's what would have to be reduced and that's what we've agreed to.
And at this point, do we have an idea how many?
But we don't believe that.
Just if you had to guess?
We believe it will be very few, if any.
Okay.
But we're, we've, we wanted to accommodate that either way, so.
And we're talking about the floodplain calculation?
Yes.
Yeah. Whereas the assumption at zero allows this to be the worst-case scenario calculation, the total?
Or the maximum scenario, that's what, that's what I would call it instead of the worst case.
Okay. And then I don't know if, Kevin, stay here, but I don't know if Amy Diaz, we need to have you come back and also Carl Carver. I'm not sure if he left the room. There he is. My understanding on Johnson's Ferry, there tends to be in heavy rains a rush of water that comes from the Kroger parking lot and then would essentially enter,
That's fine.
Would enter about where you've got your commercial driveway put in? Am I looking at that right? So my question is, how are we going to help mitigate the, the stormwater runoff that we know is existing right there when we've got a driveway right there in a parking lot? Have you addressed that at all?
If the Kroger, the Kroger Shopping Center is, and I don't know if you're saying where, where the existing, if you're looking at the site plan, coming from the top, going to the right, if you're saying there's water that comes to that location there where we have, where that's an existing signal? Is that where you're saying water comes from the Kroger? Because Kroger's across the street. So I'm not sure where that water, it's the first time I've heard that question. So it may defer to Mr. Carver, but.
Okay, so.
I do know our plan, so.
So it was communicated to me that essentially water is coming across the road right there. I guess it's, it's a known issue in that area for Johnson's Ferry Road?
I would have Mr. Carver address that because if it's water coming off another site coming across the public road, then that's gonna be a, that becomes a county issue dealing with Kroger Shopping Center. So that's, our water doesn't, if the county is gonna have to control, is controlling through their requirements and, and regulations what we do with our stormwater to ensure it's managed. And we have to manage water that comes to our site. But water from Kroger across Johnson Ferry is a question that I would leave to Mr. Carver. He's not aware of that condition, so I don't want to speak to it.
Sure. And just kind of the way I'm looking at this is it, you know, and again, I'm, if the Kroger Shopping Center, the water was designed to run to this stream that is on this existing property, by developing and putting the road here, how is that gonna impede the flow that had originally been designed to be potentially handled through this stream right here?
Now, the way this system works from my understanding is the stormwater flow is going, and the way this is oriented, because it's not oriented north-south, but is going from the bottom to the top. So that's the stormwater flow. And it actually goes through the Kroger Shopping Center underneath it and then ends up in, you know, I think it's what, East Spring subdivision where there's a, a lake going downstream. So water's going, as this site plan is oriented, from the bottom through to the top under Kroger. So they would, the Kroger stormwater management would have it going into that drainage channel or drainage way, but not coming to our site. That's downhill from us.
Correct. Can we have Carl come up?
But I'm happy to have Mr. Carver.
I'm familiar with, with this.
Speak to it.
No. Can I speak to that?
No, ma'am, not at this time. You cannot. Carl, would you mind coming to the front?
Carl Carver, Cud County Stormwater.
Thank you. To address Commissioner Gamble's question on the flow of the water and the orientation of the Kroger's Shopping Center.
I'm not aware of water coming from the Kroger. It would, Kevin is right. The water is flowing up the page. If water is coming from the Kroger site, there may be something that's clogged on the Kroger site and coming down the driveway. They have their own stormwater system and it's, their runoff should be going into their storm drainage system.
Okay. So I guess with all the rain that we're having, could we have staff look into that and make sure that it's functioning correctly?
Certainly. You know, inlets along Johnson's Ferry there would have to be studied with that new intersection. And we would work with Amy and DOT to make sure there's enough catch bases to tie in the road drainage.
Thank you.
So my last question for Kevin.
Sure.
It looks like we're heading for another hold, but my question is, is 30 days enough? Or would you rather have 60 days? Because there's a lot to get done here. And in order to give staff adequate time to then review the changes, do you have a preference? And Commissioner Richardson, not to be, you know, step on your boundaries, but I'd be willing to go for a 60-day hold if we can get all these issues worked out. Staff can have adequate time to review and comment if need be.
If that, if the question is what is our preference, it would be for 30 days. Understand that because as, the information that we have, as I indicated before, we've, we have information either way, whichever, however we want to, need to go with this, we have the studies and information. It's just a matter of making sure we tighten it up and, and provide staff, be it DOT or whomever, with that information soon enough, which we can do without a problem. But I appreciate that to give that time.
All right. Any other questions?
Actually, I do have a question for Kevin. The, the green space along the rear of the church, you mentioned that, that passive area is for public use. Who will be responsible for maintaining that?
The church and the HOA for the subdivision will be responsible for the future maintenance of that entire area. And that's part of our stipulations as well. It's included in that. But it's accessible to the public, which is also included in our stipulations.
This is actually, I guess for you, are you gonna give direction as far as which site plan to go back to and?
I will, I will not make site-specific requests, but I am putting together a motion that would include what I would look for.
Okay.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Everyone good? Okay.
Thank you.
So what I would like to do is a motion to hold this case with the direction of having a plan that would make sure that Waterfront Drive is connected, that also demonstrates some cut through mitigation strategies after conversations with DOT, and that also incorporates appropriate studies for what the proposed zonings would be. And to also include all of the downstream impacts from a stormwater aspect as a part of that presentation as well. For 30 days. Is 30 days a minute, is that something that can be accomplished in 30 days?
Yes. Yes.
That is my motion.
Second, any further discussion? Okay. If not, I call the question. Motion passes four to zero. Okay. At this time, we will take a short break and resume at 11:05, to which I will turn it back to the chair. Okay. At this time, we will take a short break and resume at 11:05, to which I will turn it back to the chairman.
The presenter and opposition for Z 31.
Who's the presenter for this case?
Mr. Hosack.
Is he here?
He said he was agreeing.
Are you amenable to that?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So that's my motion to allow 12 minutes for each side.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll call the question. All right, it carries 5-0. No, thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and get into our agenda.
And before we start that, Madam Chair and Board, I did have one request to continue one of your other business cases. Apparently, the applicant has hired a representative and they were just hired last night. So the applicant for other business 48 would like to continue this case for one month.
All righty, Commissioner Richardson.
Motion to approve the applicant's request to continue, LV 48.
All right, second. Is there any discussion? I'll call the question. All right, that case has been continued.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. If the applicant can please approach.
Okay, let me read it in real quick. Res zoning case Z 31 of 2021, Polte Home Company, request a rezoning from R 20 to R 15 OSC for single-family residential subdivision in land lots 303, 304, 345, 346, and 347 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Ebenezer Road, north of the intersection of Ebenezer Road and Blackwell Road. The applicant is present. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to this case? Please stand up and raise your hands. I think Carl's in there. They're checking the overflow room right now.
Okay, yes, thank you. For those here by video, we're just taking some time to check our overflow room to see if there's any more persons in opposition.
Madam Chair and Board, there are 23 people here opposed to this case. All those folks, for and against, who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
John, did you do a count for how many are in support?
Three, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. For the record, my name's Rob Hosack. I'm with Taylor English Decisions and I'm here today on behalf of the Polte Home Company, requesting a rezoning for property located along Ebenezer Road from the R 20 zoning classification to the R 15 zoning classification. Did want to provide some information to the board. This was originally filed and heard by the Planning Commission as an R 15 OSC, which provided for some smaller lot sizes in exchange for dedicated open space. There was overwhelming sentiment among the neighbors and the neighborhood that the lot sizes that were contained in the OSC proposal were too small. Thus, the move by my client, Polte, to go to a straight R 15 zoning classification at a reduced density with a reduced number of lots. We are now looking at 92 total lots being proposed, which yields a density of 1.96 units per acre. We are also continuing to be committed to a minimum house size of 2,500 square feet and up. We anticipate that the price points will be in excess of $500,000. We also have committed to both the Planning Commission as well as to some of the neighbors that we have met with on a number of occasions about our commitment to brand our particular product line, to the wheel-in line that has been acquired by the Polte Company. Additionally, we are establishing a mandatory HOA that will be responsible for upkeep and maintenance of the community and its components with underground utilities, internal sidewalks, decorative street lighting. Did want to call attention to the revised plan that was transmitted on September 15th by myself to the Cobb County zoning staff. by myself to the Cobb County zoning staff. I wanted to assure everyone here that every single one of those lots does meet the R 15 zoning requirements. That was an important concern. In addition, it does contemplate that one of the existing lakes that lies totally within or on the property would be drained and instead would become part of the lots with the standard state and county stream buffer protections. Did want to make mention of the fact that one of the things that came up at the Planning Commission during our OSC proposal that we thought was a continued, or had continued relevance and importance to the community, was a concern that there be some view shed protection established along Ebenezer Road. As it exists now, there aren't a whole lot of trees. It's more or less a farm or an old horse farm estate, per se. So, we realize that it is going to be important to try to shield the view of any houses that are constructed, but particularly those that either back up or face Ebenezer Road. So, we have committed a landscape plan in order to do that, have provided some schematics that we think will show how a berm buffer fence could be installed along the Ebenezer frontage and how it could accomplish some of the view shed protection efforts we're looking at. Additionally, we have completed a traffic study that includes recommendations to improve conditions and to complete project-related improvements that have been recommended by the Cobb DOT. We are agreeing to complement our proposed landscaping along Ebenezer Road with some irrigation in addition to the berm and the sidewalk throughout the Ebenezer Road frontage. We're also agreeable, Madam Chair, to a stipulation that would ensure that any fencing along Ebenezer Road or throughout the residential community would restrict wood paling materials being used as part of the construction of such. We're also agreeable to evenly distributing required guest parking within the right-of-way per recommendations from the Fire Marshal's Office. I think it was mentioned during the Planning Commission meeting and still holds true for a straight R 15, that we would want to make sure that we also provided spaces for the male kiosk. We're agreeable to specifying that lighting will be downlit in addition to architecturally consistent with the style in the community, as well as providing a 24-hour construction contact to the surrounding neighborhoods, in addition to installing a wheel wash station during the construction along the construction entrance that will be sited along Ebenezer Road. Did want to mention, we have been approached and are in active discussions right now with some folks that own the pond that is on the southwest corner of the property and is now currently jointly owned. They have expressed an interest in that pond being actually deeded to them and/or another HO, either the HOA or an entity that they would establish. And we are certainly not opposed to that and are actually in active discussions as far as that goes right now. I did want to make the board aware of, if the pond is not transferred to the HOA or a new entity that is established, then we are prepared to participate in the development of a maintenance plan for the pond with those existing pond owners. Did want to take a minute, this is a difficult map and I apologize, and I'll get to a couple of slides that'll better explain it. Purpose here is to demonstrate that we believe our proposal is consistent with what surrounds us. We've got the Blackwell Chase subdivision, also zoned R 15, similar to what we're requesting. They're at a density greater than what we're proposing at 2.08 units per acre, and they possess a house size that is 1,000 feet smaller than what we are proposing. Excellent. Black, excuse me. Dylan's Glen is also zoned R 15, slightly denser than our proposal at 2.00 units per acre, 2,200 square foot minimum house size, still a tad bit less than what we are proposing as part of ours. Magnolia Court is also zoned R 15 at a greater density, 2.06 than our particular project, and also has a variance to the setbacks throughout that project at 25 feet. They are at a similar house size, excuse me, as to what we are proposing. Princeton Grove is at R 15, slightly more dense than our proposal as well, 2.22 units per acre, 2,500 square foot minimum house size, similar to ours, however, they are also, or have been granted reduced front setbacks, different than what we are proposing. And then finally, we've got some nearby R 20 subdivisions, Lincoln Estates and Philmont Estates, that have minimum house sizes of 1,200 square feet and 2,000 square feet. 2,000 for Lincoln Estates, 1,200 for Philmont Estates. Excellent. I did want to close with why we believe it is proper for this application to be approved by the Board of Commissioners, Madam Chair. I think most importantly, the professional staff has recommended approval for the R 15 OSC at a higher density than what's being presented today. They have also identified in previous submittals, don't believe it's going to change with this submittal, that there would be no anticipated impacts upon adjacent properties or infrastructure. Did also want to note, our current site plan shows an increase of six lots above what would be allowed by the existing zoning as R 20 right now. Did want to call out, though, that that existing zoning would not provide some of the view shed protection efforts or increased minimum house sizes that we have made as part of this application. Most importantly, this might be the only one on your agenda today that has been identified as not having an impact on Cobb County or Cobb County Schools by the Cobb County School District staff. And I would like to mention, there are no variances or deviations that have been identified by staff, similar to some of the setback variances that we identified a little bit earlier. In closing, this, we believe this proposal basically accomplishes a number of the objectives that are in the county's adopted comprehensive plan as it relates to view corridors, walkability, recreational facilities, as well as promoting a compatible distribution of land use that preserves individual property rights while blending in with the community and the established communities in the area. And that would conclude our presentation or our remarks. Madam Chair, we're happy to yield any time to, I believe, the East Cobb Civic Association.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Lindstrom. I'm representing East Cobb Civic Association and I'm case manager for Z 31. While ECCA believes that R 15 is compatible to the area, so we agree to the R 15, we respectfully ask that the following recommendations be added to the stipulation letter dated September 15th and to the latest site plan. Now, the latest site plan is iffy because we understand there's a third site plan that is not yet, we've all seen it, but it has not been recorded. So, with that, we recommend that all homes backing up to Ebenezer Road have four-sided architecture, and this architecture shall be a combination of stone, brick, hardy plank, shake, board, and batten, as would be on the front facade. ECCA assumes that the stormwater management areas of the site plan are ultimately calculated and accurate in size and shape, but as of today, there is some flexibility in that size. We think that the site plans, they probably put an icon there, and so we'd like clarification on those shapes and sizes of that. Due to ECCA's genuine concern about the stand-up mature trees and disruption of wildlife nesting areas along the shared lake, we respectfully ask that a 75-foot undisturbed buffer be in place from the edge of the lake behinds lots 49 through 58. We believe this is possible, or might be possible, to do through the reshaping or moving the stormwater management over just a little bit. ECCA recommends the second stormwater management be pushed back from the sidewalk line by 10 feet to allow for landscape screening. The 30-foot buffer along the sides of the development with existing trees and vegetation shall remain as it currently is and undisturbed. And that's stipulation one. We ask that you replace the word "may" with "shall." Oh, I'm over my time. Should I stop or keep?
Yes, ma'am, you're over time.
Okay. I guess I'll stop. But you've got everything that I've proposed. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies. My name is John Stutzer, and I've been asked to speak for the neighbors of Z 31. We are very pleased that Z 31 is now a straight R 15 with no variances. However, we unanimously oppose the development having 92 lots, as that is just too dense for the area. Commissioner Bellone of the Planning Commission specifically requested that the frontage lots to Ebenezer Road be larger than the minimum size. Out of 18 frontage lots, 14 are only the standard 75 feet wide. This is not what Mr. Bellone directed Polte to do. The north entrance is offset to the Ebenezer Maybreeze intersection. It is approximately 15 feet too far to the northwest. DOT has also mentioned that a roundabout could be built in this intersection in the future. So, now is the time to accommodate that space requirement by either reducing the size or eliminating lots 17 and 18. Otherwise, a roundabout could not be built without destroying property or homes. We request a site plan that has a maximum of 85 lots. To achieve this number, we suggest that lots 8, 15, 34, 40, 45, 46, and 53 be removed and the remaining lots in each row be enlarged to convey a larger look for the whole development. We request a minimum home size of 3,000 square feet in John Wheelan-style homes. Mr. Hasek verbally committed to using the higher John Wheelan-style homes in two previous meetings. However, the elevations in the STIP letter of 915 do not reflect what we were shown. They show the original Polte homes with bare wood posts. We concur and request a 75-foot undisturbed buffer be established along the eastern shore of the joint lake. This is for lots 49 to 58. The buffer in the middle of the lake does absolutely nothing. We request a 50-foot undisturbed buffer be established along the remainder of the property line, which adjoins any other Blackwell Chase lots. We request that the 30-foot buffer around the rest of the north, south, and west boundaries of the property be defined as undisturbed. We request a six-foot high berm with mature landscaping of an additional eight to 10 feet high, along with a fence on top of the berm to block the view of the first level backs of the houses along Ebenezer. In addition, there's extreme concern about excessive and additional water runoff into and downstream from the joint lake to the west of the property impacting Catalina Court. A development of 92 homes will have a very negative impact on the traffic flow on Ebenezer. We estimate at least a 15% increase in traffic, creating rush hour gridlock on Ebenezer between Maybreeze and Blackwell. We request that the roadway hash marks at the south entrance of the site plan be deleted from the site plan, as DOT has advised that they are not needed at that intersection. There are no crosswalks for walkers and children to cross Ebenezer in order to get to school. In three prior meetings with Polte, we've attempted to reach a compromise regarding their application. Each time, they were unyielding to our input, insisting that they won't change their plan, either for the rezoning of the property or for the density of homes. Commissioner Dance directed Polte to continue a dialogue with the owners of the joint lake and the neighbors between the Planning Commission hearing and this hearing. And with the exception of one meeting at the Catalina Court and Lakewood Estates and Blackwell Chase neighbors to discuss water runoff, that dialogue has not happened. We also ask that the neighbors be involved in deciding the final stipulations. At no time during our meetings with Polte were we allowed to discuss their STIP letter. Consequently, I've submitted to each of you via email all of our requested revisions and additions, and we request that they be incorporated in the final STIP letter. Because of all of these problems and objections, we ask that Z 31 be continued until October and Polte be made to compromise with the neighbors' concerns, or I ask you to deny Z 31. If any changes are made to the site plan during the site plan review, I request that these changes be brought back to the board for approval as another business item, allowing for community review and comment. Thank you, ladies.
My name is Veronica Lilly, and I represent Catalina Court Lakewood Estates, R 20. Others who spoke today have made excellent points regarding numbers of homes, landscapes, and buffers. But my neighbors and I are the only ones that will be directly affected by any adjustments or change to the site plan through increased water runoff. Our homes and yards could be damaged with every change made. Water is the great destroyer. We've been told a hydrology report is required, but on Catalina Court, we've already had major water issues from the building of Blackwell Chase. In the mid-'90s, the county had to come onto our properties to correct the errors that were allowed during the building of Blackwell Chase. The retention pond behind the homes on Blackwell Chase property never has been maintained and is currently overgrown and does not work properly. We need help on how to get this fixed. Our yards are eroding. Could there already be issues with both lakes on Mr. Phillips' property? Leaks? Spillage? We don't know. We would like the county to inspect this area. Stormwater management may have ideas to mitigate further erosion and flooding. On September 11th, we scheduled and attended a meeting with Rob Hosack. Within 30 minutes of that meeting, everything we requested and told that would be considered was denied. No study has been completed regarding water runoff, so no one knows what the consequences are for moving the pond solely owned by Mr. Phillips. I have an educated guess that more water is coming my way. Yes, we know the county says this is not allowed, et cetera, but we'll have to call the county, show the proof, and then again, have hope that the neighbors in the county will do the right thing, while damage continues to occur during all this red tape. Phillips' property is significantly higher than those on Catalina Court. We are in danger of being washed away. So, Commissioners, please be mindful that Polte has made promises and quickly turned around from those promises. I hope you consider our concerns and delay this approval. Polte doesn't even have a final site we can review. They had a deadline to get it due, and it's changed three times. Let's not rush this, as many of us could be greatly affected by what's decided today. Thank you.
Hey, are there any additional speakers? All right, with that, Commissioner Burrow.
Thank you. I'd like to call Carl Carver up. Is he here?
He's here.
Hey, Carl. I usually start with DOT, but I think I'm going to start with water today.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater.
Thank you, Carl. Could we have a site plan up for the, that shows the detention ponds? Carl, are you familiar with this shared lake?
Yes. The shared lake issue could be a problem with the stormwater pond as shown. Right now, the property line includes the stormwater pond and half the lake. We would not want to take on the lake. We would not want to take on the lake. So the pond would have to be split out separate from that parcel.
So would it need to move from that location?
They could create a property line between the lake and the stormwater pond, once the pond is final designed.
Okay. So would they still be within the 50 or 75-foot buffer?
It's hard to say at this point, because they haven't done a grading plan. But right now, they're showing it right up close to the 50-foot buffer.
Okay, but in some, some part of that is 75-foot. The state requires 25 feet. We require 50, but that 25 can be within the 50, correct? Or does it add to it?
There's, we have a 50-foot buffer, and then outside of that is normally an additional 25-foot impervious setback. It's an impervious zone where we can't have any impervious, but with a pond, they would just be grading and fill, so that would be okay.
That wouldn't be, okay. But is there any way to get 75-feet buffer in that to the lake, from the lake to the detention pond?
Based on this schematic level, it's hard to determine, but they would have to reconfigure the pond based on what's shown and move it towards the lots a little bit more. But for Cobb County to take over the stormwater management pond, it has to be on its own separate lot with 20-foot road frontage.
Okay. And we're not, we're not going to do that. They will, they will own it.
The pond?
Yeah, you sent me an email this morning.
Right. As it's shown right now, it's, we would not take that pond.
Okay.
It would have to be split.
So let me ask you this, and if this is not really, if this is not to scale or whatever, that plus the other stormwater detention kind of in the center, is that sufficient for the lots?
Conceptually, yes. It would be acceptable. If you put a landscape strip between the right-of-way and the pond lot, it could be reconfigured so that the landscape strip would be maintained by the HOA. We would not maintain landscaping on the pond parcel.
Okay. So you heard Ms. Lilly's talking about runoff from Blackwell Chase, which was built years ago. And now with this, what is that going to do for runoff to Catalina?
Well, to establish a baseline for the existing conditions, as they are today, they have to establish the flows coming out of the pond, as they are today, plus the other areas of the site, to establish a baseline flow for the exist, what we call the existing condition. They can't exceed that flow in the future, so they would have to add what's coming out of the westernmost pond, their stormwater ponds, and any areas that are bypassing any stormwater ponds. And combine them together just downstream so that that flow rate is not exceeded, and the volume is at the same timing as the original conditions.
Okay. And that's county standards that they would have to comply with?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you, since this case has been filed, have you been out to Catalina?
I did not get out there. The meeting that was on a Saturday about a week or so ago, I had to go out of town to see my mother, so I wasn't able to go.
Okay. Do you think in the next couple of weeks, you could get out there and meet with Ms. Lilly to see if, you know, what the existing problems are and where it's coming from, and anything the county could do to correct that, help relieve that?
Yes, I could get out there.
Okay, thank you. And you can, I guess, talk to her and schedule something?
Right.
Okay.
I've talked to her on the phone.
Thank you, Carl. Anybody else? Oh, wait, wait.
Carl, you stated that in order for the county to take over the detention pond, it had to be on public road. It appears that that is achieved between lots 49 and 50 on this site plan, if I'm not mistaken. Rob Hosack, is that correct? So essentially, what they have done is they've included the road frontage in between those two lots to access this detention pond.
That would work. The issue is there, if the half of the existing lake is HOA property, they need access to that part of the property as well and not go through the pond lot.
Okay.
Does that make?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
So, if I may, are you?
Go ahead.
The pond in the middle, they have a road. So that one?
That one's okay unless you put the 10-foot, there was a request for 10-foot landscape strip along the right-of-way there. So there would have to be a 20-foot gap in that landscape strip and a property line drawn so that we have access to the pond.
But then if I can add on to that, it sounds like, but from there, they also have to have separate access for the HOA to get to the existing pond without using the county right-of-way.
It looks as if there's access to that parking area between lots 48 and 49.
Correct. That access would serve for the stormwater management pond, but it cannot be served for accessing the HOA property behind the pond.
So would all that be decided in plan review?
It could, it could. I think they understand that the pond has to stand on its own parcel with 20-foot road frontage.
And they maintain it?
We maintain the 20-foot access and the pond. They would maintain a separate access to the back HOA property.
That's confusing. At best. Okay, well, that, wow. So we don't know if they could do a 75-foot buffer at the top. We don't know if the stormwater management pond could be moved to have access, the 20 feet, or?
Not, not without a grading plan. It'd be hard to say if they can make the pond, how much volume they need. I'm sure they haven't done all those calculations at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. That's all I have. DOT? And Bob, are you here for fire marshal?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Hi, Amy. We received a site plan with the new entrance at Maybreeze as opposed to Dogleg. And initially, that was the fire marshal, the law that went into effect in January of It did not meet it at Dogleg. And so it's been shifted down to Maybreeze, and that will be a four-way stop.
Yes, ma'am.
However, it doesn't really align with the opposite side of Maybreeze across the street.
What I've communicated to the developer is that they may have to do some minor intersection improvements, that we would not ask them to realign Maybreeze, which I believe was their concern when they said they did not want to do intersection improvements outside their development. But because of the way that, if you can see, Maybreeze has a very wide throat because of the skew angle it's at, to make the paths work, we may have to widen the throat of the intersection on their side as well, just to make sure we have all travel paths accommodated. So they may require an intersection radius to be, or two to be reconstructed, but all the improvements that we'll ask from them in the plan review process, when we have those kind of engineering details, will still be limited just to the intersection footprint. We won't be asking them to realign Maybreeze.
Okay. And then, there's been talk about a possible roundabout. I know it's not on my SPOS list, and I don't know where the funding is designated or that it's even a designated project. I think it's just maybe a suggestion or was talked about as an idea for that area, because the three-way stop now does get backed up.
Right.
And there is a lot of traffic. So does the traffic study that was done with the entrance being moved to a more congested area affect that? Or do we need a new traffic study now that school's in and what have you?
So qualitatively, we took a look at it and believe it's not going to significantly increase the queues that already exist at Maybreeze. Maybe by, currently, by the level of service and the queues that are given from the analysis that we've been provided for the traffic study, we have, the northbound 95th percentile queue is six cars, which is, you know, a backup for that 95th percentile, which is basically the top 5% of your queues. Southbound is two cars, so less, more people will go in northbound. This is in the PM peak, which was the peak period of all the three periods that were looked at. Adding, and I did this because they haven't had a chance to submit an updated traffic study, but I added that fourth leg and added the appropriate traffic just to see what change it made. And it basically, it changed it from 5.9 to 6.3, so probably a car every, you know, so often. It will be longer than if it was still just a three-way stop. If you want the definitive quantitative answers, though, yes, they would have to revise the traffic study with the entrance moved. They also, the traffic study we have has a full movement at the southern entrance on Ebenezer, which is actually the DOT recommendation that it be full movement, but they have on their site plan right now that it's right-in, right-out. And that also changes how much traffic has to go out at Maybreeze, so.
So, but Maybreeze, if there was a four-way stop there, it would be full access?
It would be full access, which means anybody that wanted to turn left but didn't want to have to do a U-turn maneuver would have to, instead of coming out that southern entrance, would have to come out at Maybreeze. That's why it changes the volumes.
Okay. But the southern entrance would be another outlet, but only right-in, right-out?
Correct. DOT would recommend that the southern entrance be full movement, but currently on their site plan, it is shown as right-in, right-out. And the traffic study that we have has it as full movement.
With, with the new Maybreeze?
No. The traffic study we have has the Dogleg and then the southern, but it has both of those access points as full movement.
Okay. So would you recommend keeping the south entrance as full movement, even though Maybreeze would be full movement?
Yes, because we don't, we have concerns about the narrowness of Ebenezer Road and introducing U-turns in that area without access to basically a good place to turn. We believe that people are going to be turning around in people's driveways, and we want to keep everybody on the public right-of-way.
Okay. Okay. And then, what would DOT require or recommend for a right-of-way at Maybreeze for a future project?
So the roundabout that's, that's been discussed, it is a location that's been put on a list of places to consider, but there's a number of places in the county that are higher on that roundabout list. And a roundabout costs about $3 million, roughly. So it's a lot of money when we're talking about a roundabout location. I don't, since we don't have a project on the books for here, we were not going to request the right-of-way. What I would ask, if the developer can situate the homes so that it would not preclude the roundabout going in, if it is funded in a future project, then that would be better, because otherwise, the county would have to take the homes at that corner if that project went forward. The footprint for a roundabout is roughly 70-foot from centerline.
And that would be the two lots, 17 and 18, I believe?
Right. And those lots are bigger than a lot of the others, because they're kind of a little bit pie-shaped. So it may be that that's something they can accommodate, but I, until they lay everything out, I'm not sure.
Okay. There was one other thing. Oh, if this development gets approved, I know a signal is not warranted currently at Maybreeze and Ebenezer with the three legs. If this were to get approved, could, once this developed, if it gets approved, could we do another traffic signal study to see if a signal is warranted as opposed to the flashing lights?
Yes, I've discussed that with our signal department, and it can be added to the list for our signal warrant studies.
And we do have funding for that?
That, that's something that we do internal to the department, so it's not a specific SPOS project or anything.
Okay. That's all I had for Amy.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions for DOT?
Thank you.
Could I ask Mr. Hosack to come up, please?
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner.
I wanted to go through some things that you mentioned and that the neighborhoods mentioned as far as some concessions to make. I know you did agree originally to, to the John Whelan line of homes that Pulte owns. And I know it was in your presentation, so I'm assuming you are agreeable to that and will commit to that?
Yes, ma'am. I think there might be a little bit of confusion. The old John Whelan looks a little different than some of the newer architectural styles that are being branded and constructed as part of that line. So I, I think that, and I had a slide previously, I did not include it today, but there are a number of Whelan communities in North Carolina that have the exact same architecture as what is in the stipulation letter of September 15. So I think, Commissioner Burl, there may be a little bit of confusion as to what constitutes a Whelan product line, but I can assure you, the renderings that have been attached are, are being offered as part of a number of branded Whelan communities throughout the southeast. So yes, ma'am. Long answer to your question.
Okay. Also, there's some other, other requests with the buffer at the lake, the stormwater management, that I guess need to be worked out. I know that you're, in your presentation, you are a straight R-15, 15,000 minimum square foot lots. I believe when what Mr. Stutzer alluded to of the lots on Ebenezer being more than the minimum, that was when it was an OSC.
That's correct, ma'am.
And that was only required 10,000 lots, and I think that's what the direction was, to make those larger. But OSC is not on the table anymore. So, and this is a straight R-15 with no variances, but because there are some things that I think need to be worked out with the traffic study and the Maybreeze and the stormwater management. study and the Maybury's and the stormwater management, and I want Carl to visit Catalina, and also for you to get with them to try and define that buffer and the size of the stormwater management. I, I think, you know, a lot of this can be worked out. And then, I'm going to ask the following five people to be on a committee to work with me and staff and you to see if we can finalize some of these outstanding issues and see what we can work out over the next, till the next zoning hearing.
Commissioner Burl? Yes, ma'am. And I did want to, hopefully, this will clear up. We are very aware of the fact that the detention pond must stand on its own, so whether it is jointly owned, or whether it is deeded over to Blackwell Chase or another entity created to accept that new pond, it will be separated. It will be on a separate lot from the stormwater facility, because it's our intention to make sure that it is publicly accepted by Cobb County Stormwater in accordance with the normal process. So, we do know, whether it's jointly owned, or whether it's owned by Blackwell Chase or another entity, it's going to have to be on a separate lot, standalone from the detention pond lot. So, I did want to clear that up. And then, I want to make sure everybody also understands, we have no intention of discharging any of the stormwater into that existing pond, the jointly-owned pond. As, as preliminary or conceptually designed, it's not going to discharge into that, into that pond.
Okay. And then, the issues with the landscaping and the berm and all that, I am going to have the county arborist work with you on that over the next 30 days as well. I, I can't tell you that the berm, the fence has to be on top of the berm, or, I, I want the county arborist to assess that and make that decision. But anything that is decided has to come back to the district commissioner for final approval, and landscape and, and fencing and all that will be approved by the county arborist as well, with input and review from the committee. So, that will be determined at the next meeting if we continue this today. So, I'd like to ask the following folks if they would sit on this committee to work with all of us, staff, me, and Mr. Hosak, over the next 30 days, or till the next, before the next meeting. John and Mary Stutzer, Tom Dilbeck, I think he's here. Tom, are you agreeable to being on the committee?
Yes, Commissioner Burl.
Okay. Steve and Monica Westbrooks, I don't think they're here, but, oh, there they are. And Kim Freeman from Dogleg, Magnolia, I mean, thank you. And Chris Lindstrom. Okay. So, I'd like that, that committee to be the committee for review of everything, and I, I've already asked Carl to meet with Ms. Lilly for the runoff, so I don't, I don't think we need to put you on the committee unless you desperately need to, but your issue is mainly stormwater, and, and you're not, you don't face the property on Ebenezer, but are you comfortable with just working with stormwater management and, to resolve your issue? Can you come up to the podium? I'm sorry. And I, I don't normally engage the audience, but I-
I know. And it's okay, just as long as they're on the mic.
Okay.
Just constructive to helping you move this forward.
On this site, the blue stream that's permanent is aimed at my backyard. So, I mean, I don't know if that will be discussed in the committee at all. If items like that are discussed, then yes, I would like to be on the committee.
Okay, we'll just put you on there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, there's some other things that I was going to ask you if you're agreeable to, but since we're going to be working through this over the next 30 days, I'll just wait and see what we come up with final. You have the list from the neighbors of what, you know, and I know we have gone through most of it before today to see what could be worked out. So, with that, I would like to make a motion to continue Z-31 to the next zoning hearing.
Second, is there any discussion? Commissioner, you're good? Okay. All right, we'll call the question. Sorry. It will be a hold.
Didn't have the motion to hold.
Commissioner Richardson. We would be, is that what you're clarifying?
Yes, motion to hold.
Because the, because he presented, we'd actually be holding the matter. Yep, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we hold Z-31 to the next zoning hearing.
Second, discussion? All right, we'll call the question. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, it passes 5-0.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z-40 of 2021, Brazos Hicks LLC requesting rezoning from R-20 to RA-5 for a single-family subdivision in landlots 27 and 28 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Concord Road, on the east and west sides of Brazos Drive, and on the east side of Hicks Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-40?
Excuse me, why don't we go ahead? It will take a brief recess for a couple minutes, so this crowd can clear, so we can hear the next case. For those of you who are here for Z-31, we need you to please exit the room. There, we are in the middle of a hearing, we are in the middle of a hearing. For those of you who are here for Z-31, we ask that you please exit. I said a couple minutes, so we'll wait till 1:56. Okay. All right, we'll wait till she gets back. Thank you, I didn't even speak. All right, welcome back to our zoning hearing. We'll now proceed to the next case, John.
Okay. Res zoning case Z-40 of 2021, Brazos Hicks LLC requesting rezoning from R-20 to RA-5 for a single-family subdivision in landlots 27 and 28 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Concord Road, on the east and west sides of Brazos Drive, and on the east side of Hicks Road. The applicant is present, and there are three, three people here in opposition. All those folks, wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board Members. For the record, my name is David Meyer. I'm the owner of DGM Land Plan Consultants, and today, also the designer of the site plan. Today, I'm representing Brazos Hicks LLC, and I'm going to be turning over to Mr. Mark Whitmire the bulk of this, the bulk of this presentation. We all felt that he would be in a better place to explain this, due to the fact that he is a principal of Brazos Hicks LLC. Meanwhile, I'll be standing by for any questions, along with Alan Rhodey, who's also on our team, and between the two of us, we'll see if we can get everything answered for you. Then, lastly, I just want to thank each of you for your professional assistance throughout this, your staff included. It's been a long evolution of the project, so we're very grateful, we appreciate your consideration. So, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thank you for having us today, and we have, feel as though, Ms. Commissioner Sheffield, that we've addressed the items that have been raised by the board and also by the, the neighbors. We have one correction on stipulation. Help me with the number, David. We have northeast, number 26, should read the northeast corner rather than the northwest corner. Otherwise, we feel that we've addressed, and, and so I'll just simply respond to any questions that there may be with regard to the application.
Excuse me, do you have the, may you please present the application, so commissioners who are less familiar with the project understand what you're proposing?
Certainly, we have proposed R-15 OSC, basically following the direction of the previous hearing. We originally applied for RA-5. We revised it at y'all's request to R-15, and that is what is presented in the drawing on the upper right-hand corner. We have addressed an issue with adjoining property owner that's concerned with the sewer line. What just went off the screen, the sewer will not leave the upper right-hand corner, it will leave through the upper left-hand corner. We're putting a fence between the adjoining property owners on the right-hand side of this plat, and we're putting a fence with a gated entrance on the silver Comet Trail, so as to restrict egress into the community. It would only, that access would be afforded to the members of the homeowners association of the, of the community. We have provided the necessary open space, minimum lot sizes of 10,000 feet, and a total lot count of 44 lots.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude your presentation for today?
It does.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here in opposition to this application? So, we'll allot time for the opposition to speak. Yes, sir, please proceed, and you can start off letting us know your name, and you can go ahead.
Yes, my name is Harvey Hightower. I live at 739 Concord Road Southwest, and my major concern with this development, I mean, there are others, but on, on the plat shows here on Concord Road, an offset to the south, taking up all the right-of-way that there is there, and, but, but in the stipulation from Mr. Meyer, they have 40 feet to deal with, they have been granted 40 feet on the north side of the center line of the road. So, this offset on the right, on the south side of the road, I don't concern that, I mean, don't consider that to be necessary, if they have the additional 40 feet on these, on the north side of the road to, to make the left-turn lane that's, that's what the DOT has required them to have, a left-turn lane off of east, eastbound Concord traffic to get into Brazos Drive. Now, the, if there's a DOT rep, I, I would like to hear from them, see what their consideration is, but that's, that's my major concern for the day, is, is that offset in Concord Road, because that, that would mean moving the sidewalk that's on that side of the road, the lane itself would have to be moved, and people coming from Hicks Road going eastbound, they would have an extra adjustment to make in their drive, whereas today, they just drive straight through on, on the eastbound lane. I have some pictures if you would like to see.
We'd be glad to, we can have communications put on our monitor.
That first one is standing. That picture is taken from, from my driveway looking west toward Hicks Road. So, you see that the trees, that, all those would be gone if they, if they do this offset in the south side of Concord Road. And that's just a picture of the property as it is on the, on the north side of the road. There's no, at this time, there's no additional construction over there. That one is, this. That picture shows the left-turn lane that's currently in place to get from Concord Road onto Hicks Road. Now, that, that same traffic pattern, I feel, could be put in place and brought to serve the entry to Brazos Drive and- to Brazos Drive and eliminate any construction on the south side of the road since they have 40, according to the stipulation letter, they have 40 feet of right-of-way on the north side of Concord Road, a minimum 40 feet from the road, the center line of the road. And now stipulation number 11. That just shows another traffic pattern, I mean, another view of So I think I have made my statements, and
Thank you.
Miss Hunt, I'd be next, I think.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for here.
Is there anyone else here in opposition who'd like to speak? There's five additional minutes before we turn things over to the Commissioner.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Thank you for having me. I'm Elaine Redwine. I live at 721 Gregory Manor. I will say I'm actually pretty happy with what they proposed, especially since I get the green space behind my house. My concerns have always been that my property does not get touched, which so far they're agreeing to do that. So I'm just restating that I really don't want the sewer going through my property. I don't want my trees taken down. And everybody involved's been pretty accommodating, as far as I can tell so far. And Monique, thank you so much. You have been a fantastic representative so far as well. Thank you so much. But yeah, all I have to say is I'm totally okay with it as long as I get to keep my trees and my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition? Yes, ma'am, you have about four and a half minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Heidi Hunt. I live at 720 Gregory Manor Drive, next to Ms. Redwine, who just spoke. And I'll show you on the map. My lot is here, and Ms., the Redwine's is next to me. Oh, so, okay, thanks. My lot is on the northeast corner, and the Redwine's lot is right just south of mine. And my, I am in support of the current plan with a couple of caveats, and I want to thank especially Commissioner Sheffield for working real closely with us on a lot of the issues that we, as surrounding property owners, have expressed, and she's been very responsive to our concerns. But I want to talk again about, in the stipulation letter number 26, I'm going to read it real quick. "The rezoning plat, R-15 OSC for the subject Z-40 rezoning petition as submitted, provides for sewer egress from this development to utilize the Hicks Road right-of-way to the west of the parcels included in this rezoning petition. It will not require an easement agreement to be negotiated with the property owners at the northwest corner." And I think Mr. Whitmire earlier said that that northwest should be northeast because that's referring to mine and the Redwine's properties. We were concerned that there was a, there was talk that that would be the most convenient connection for the sewer line. But now, the current plan, and I've seen there seem to be some detailed sewer diagrams that we were able to look at earlier. It seems like they are exiting on the northwest corner of the subdivision. It won't affect our lots. But my question is, a comprehensive sewer plan and a hydrologic study have not been done at this point. And so my question is, if the site plan has to change appreciably because of, you know, whatever these studies find, will this stipulation still hold? And that's just my question on that, if there's anyone here who can answer that. Or is it only, is the stipulation only subject to the current site plan that we see up on the screen? And just one more point, I agree with Mr. Hightower that the major renovation on the south side of Concord Road that would be required to accommodate a left-turn lane into Z-40 would be a huge undertaking and put a really unreasonable burden on all the homeowners on the south side of Concord Road. And that is, that concludes my comments, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in opposition? Okay, seeing no one else, Commissioner Sheffield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can start with calling Amy up, please? Amy, you should wear a Fitbit so you can count your steps.
Y'all just want to make me a movie star. Amy Diaz, DOT.
Thank you. Amy, if you could address for us the left-turn lane on Hicks, on Concord Road, which was a concern for Mr. Hightower, actually, and for Ms. Hunt.
Yes, so Commissioner Sheffield contacted me yesterday to let me know that this was a concern, so I have sketched something up. It is only a sketch, this isn't the final, but it at least gives you some idea of where that left-turn lane can go. Actually, let me just show them this page. So this is a page out of our recent Concorded Hicks project. So it does go all the way to Brazo. Is it up there? Okay.
Can you orient us, please?
This is Brazo, right here. And then, so Hicks is further down this way.
Okay, thank you.
So this was the last sheet of the project, because this is the farthest the project distance was. So what I did is, we would keep the south line where it is. We want to disturb the project as little as possible, and all improvements that are required of development have to either occur in existing right-of-way or off of the project property so that they then dedicate to us as right-of-way. So this green line shows you where the existing through lane is, and it would stay where it is. The blue is a taper and a short left-turn lane that moved to the south. And then we have a yellow, the yellow lane shows the through lane, how it would shift over and then shift back. The actual, where it joins up to Concord Road would be off this page because it's about 225 to 245 feet down. There are formulas that let them know, basically, the number of feet that they shift over, how far the tapers have to be based on that number of feet. So that's something that, again, we work out in plan review, but this at least gives you an idea of what it might look like. The pink is the sidewalk, so we would have to disturb the sidewalk where we disturb the roadway and move it into the site. And it moves it, the whole thing, into the site about the width of that lane, so about 10, 12 feet.
Okay, so the south side of Concord would not be touched?
Correct, yes. It moves it into the north side of Concord.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have, Amy. Do you all have any questions? Commissioner?
Commissioner.
Is the Concord Road entrance the only entrance? Is there access on Hicks Road?
There's no access to the main subdivision. The previous site plan I saw had two lots on Hicks Road. I believe those are still there on the top part, if you can move it down a little bit. There's one lot still there, I believe. Oh, no, they've made it all open space. Okay, so I haven't seen this most recent site plan, but
I hadn't either till right now.
But it looks like the lots that they were intending to put on Hicks Road has now been converted into open space, so there are no driveways on Hicks at all.
Great. So, Mr. Bennett, Captain Bennett, would you like to address that as far as the, because it's more than 30 homes? Where? That's what I'm asking, if there's an entrance.
Not for the homeowners, no. There is, go ahead, ask a question.
Bob Bennett with Cobb County Fire and Marshals Office. I've not seen this plan at all, and we're at
Sorry about that. I don't know how that happened.
Forty-something homes. So 40 single-family dwellings, based on the new state requirement, it would require a secondary access egress point, either on Hicks Road or up on Silver Comet. Oh, that's the trail, okay. So, yeah, probably out onto Hicks Road.
Right, and that secondary access is between lots 24 and 25 at the end of the cul-de-sac. Amy, if you would.
Yeah, I was going to mention that, that's something had been discussed, but I don't believe it's shown on this plan, is basically an emergency-only access off the end of the cul-de-sac between 24 and 25, like she mentioned, to Hicks Road.
And, okay, so it does connect to the cul-de-sac for access, for fire only, with a gate and all that?
That's what's been discussed. I don't know if it's in the stipulation letter or not.
Provided that was indicated, there's no parking, fire lane, and had the appropriate gate across it, we could accept that, that'd be fine.
Thank you. What's that unit threshold or lot threshold that you add the second entrance?
I'm sorry?
What's the lot threshold that you have to have the second entrance?
30.
30, thank you.
Yeah, anything over 30.
Okay, are there any additional questions? Thank you, sir. I also would like the applicant to provide us, if you would approach if you would provide us with an update on the sewer and the hydrology report.
We're not complete with all of the engineering yet, but we have studied this enough that the sewer, am I addressing your question as far as where the sewer line will be?
Yeah, that and my last update or understanding is that you all were working with GDOT with respect to running it underneath the Silver Comet Trail. Do you have an update on that?
Yeah. That is correct, Commissioner Sheffield. I spoke with Tim Davidson this morning outside as well, and you and I had talked about why GDOT was involved, and it has to do with, because we're right at the Silver Comet Trail, wanting to go under it, that's why GDOT's involved in addition to Cobb County. And I know they're, Mark Lee are engineers discussing that with them right now.
Okay, so you don't have any updates to share?
Correct, what you're looking at right now, typically, they don't start until the zoning's been approved, but Mark has discussed it with Tim and proceeded on some rough sketches, one of which you're looking at. So essentially, nothing's been done at this point other than that location agreed to. Or that location felt that that's going to be the best way to go.
Okay, all right. I guess to Heidi's question earlier, in the event it is not placed there, then what is the plan?
We, I asked Mark Lee a couple weeks ago, we were presenting this at a different time, asked him if I could be certain in saying that it is going to go right there where it's shown right now. He said it can be, it's as close as anything else he's ever, as close as he can get it without saying, without guaranteeing it. It looks like it will work.
It has to go downhill, so that's the direction that's downhill. So going back up towards Ms. Heidi's property is not a possibility. This is where the sewer would have to connect to the existing sewer. So it's, the community is dependent upon us being able to access the sewer line at that point.
Is Tim here? Can you?
Yeah.
Would you mind approaching and sharing some insight with us, please?
Tim Davidson, Cobb County Water System.
Our last communication was that they were working, the applicant was working with GDOT. Is there any information that you can share with respect to what they're outlining today in terms of?
Unfortunately, not really. Just, I spoke to Mark Lee about just permitting in the Silver Comet Trail, and I let him know that that would be a Georgia DOT permit. So this is the first time I've seen this route. I have no thoughts on it now, generally until plan review, until I see a full design.
Right, okay, all right, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you, gentlemen, that'll be all. Okay, I just want to thank the applicants for the revised plan. We've gone back to the drawing table several times. There were several plans that were submitted, including a blend, which we decided would not be the best option for this location. And obviously, we wanted to capitalize on the natural resources at that property, so we decided that an R-15 open space would be the most appropriate for that location. So I thank them also for responding and addressing the concerns of the community, and also for the community for your engagement in the process and making yourself available on the weekends to have calls with me, so I appreciate that. This is a project that I am comfortable with now that we're to this point, and there's been a lot of back and forth. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion to approve Z-40 with the following revisions. One, that we include stipulation letter from David G. Meyer dated September 21, 2021, that we strike stipulation number 21 from the letter as there are no variances for the Special step number 15, that the maximum, if we would include, that the maximum number of rental shall not exceed 10%. Stipulation 16, the entrance signage shall include wire highlight, uplights. Stipulation number six should read northeast and not northwest. Stipulation 28, in the event the HOA determines that it will install a fence from the northeast property line to Lot 28, the fence shall be consistent in style and material as the fence along the northern property line. The wooden fence along the eastern property line shall be maintained by the HOA and shall be repaired in a reasonable timeframe. Stipulation number 35, that the district commissioner to approve the final elevation. And if we would also add that the fire access shall be on Hicks Road, that will also include a gate for fire access only, and that a landscape visual buffer to be added along the rear lots of 1, 2, and 3, and the landscape to be approved by the county arborist. And I just want to make sure. And all staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. And that concludes my revisions.
And sorry, Commissioner, I'm getting lost in your stipulations, but
Sure.
They have that second access point.
Yes.
Okay, it was included, all right.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, okay.
No, I didn't. Thank you.
All right. And for clarification, these are public roads, or any of these?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Is there a second for the motion?
John has it.
And just to clarify the motion, the motion was to delete it to R-15 OSC. Okay. That's it.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner?
I'm not going to be able to support this application. I know you and I spoke about this the last time it was heard. Essentially, in the 30-foot setback to the building, 20 feet of that is going to be the landscape buffer, essentially leaving a 10-foot backyard. That 20-foot landscape buffer is what is essentially being promised to the adjacent homeowners to help buffer this, this development from them. Historically, I know we've had a lot of problems in District 1 where there's that landscape buffer, and then the homeowners come in and want to utilize their entire backyard, which should be 30 feet, and then cut down that buffer, which takes away what was promised to the adjacent homeowners. So with the landscape buffer being included in the setback, I cannot support this.
Is there anybody from zoning who can clarify that?
Yes, Commissioner Gamble is correct. On the site plan that was submitted today or yesterday, the 20-foot landscape buffer is contained within the 30-foot rear building setback for those lots along the east property line. So, you know, she is correct that we've had a lot of problems in the past with people going into the buffer areas. You know, the one thing about this I think that we can look at is these houses aren't going to be right on the 30-foot rear setback. They're probably going to be 30 feet away from the buffer line to the back of the house. So there is some separation instead of the house being right on the buffer lines. So there will be some amount of backyard.
That's what I would like some clarification on. I can anticipate that there will be an expectation for there to be a 10-foot backyard, given that buffer, so. Commissioner Sheffield, if you're okay with us getting some clarification from the applicant?
Absolutely, yeah. Clarification, I don't know if we need to word it in a stipulation a particular way.
I'm not sure if we need to word it in the stipulation, but I'm looking at the site plan. I think there's enough area in there, once you get the house plotted, that there's at least 30 feet from the back of the house to where the 20-foot landscape buffer actually begins.
Oh, so it will be outside of the landscape buffer?
Can we, could the applicant come forward?
I do, I've developed in excess of 10,000 lots across Atlanta over the last 35 years. And there's enough space that, from a practical standpoint, when we build the homes, we've got to build a home with a backyard. And we're not going to, we're going to consider the backyard outside of the landscape easement. So where we put decks or slabs or whatever it, it may be, patios. We're going to take that into consideration from a marketing standpoint. People generally will not want to purchase a home with a 10-foot backyard. So I do think there's enough depth in the lot to accommodate a house in a larger backyard. It's where the lines line up from a, you know, establishing the, the landscape buffer is just where they, they simply land.
Because the home isn't necessarily depicted on the plan.
Correct.
I see the line for the buffer, but that doesn't necessarily mean the back of the home is going to be right off of it.
Right, so if the... So to get the best street scape, the homes won't necessarily all be the same distance from the yard. It's, the driveways, the farther the house goes back, the longer the driveway is. So we're encouraged to keep the homes closer to the street, simply because of the cost consideration of the driveway. And the area in the back is, is a livable area. If you look at the, if this is a 30-foot building line, you know, there's roughly 60, 70 feet of buildable area here. So we're not going to be filling up this building envelope with a house. So I think there'll be ample land to provide for a livable backyard.
So based on your estimation, what would you say that would be?
A backyard, I'd want to have at least 20 to 25 feet in that area.
Are, are all of these lots 10,000 square feet or?
Minimum or more, yes.
So, John, is that something that we need to stipulate? Do we review and site review, like?
We don't need to stipulate it because it's already shown on the site plan.
Okay, okay.
All right, is there any further discussion? We'll call a question. Motion carries for one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Okay, moving into other business, your first and last item on today's agenda is other business item number 45 of 2020, of 2021, which is to consider a site plan and stipulation amendment for Mr. Abbas Haderi regarding other business application number 12 of 2020 for property located on the southeast side of Paper Mill Road, east of Gay Side Place and landlots 5, 6, and 74 of the 1st District. By way of background, the subject property is owned R-20, and the applicant received approval last year from the Board of Commissioners to develop a six-lot gated subdivision, subject to Cobb County Development Standards Number 424. The applicant has submitted a revised site plan that now shows only four lots. The applicant would need to revise stipulation number four to allow this change. And the applicant would also need to revise stipulation number nine regarding the detention pond. The revision is driven by the fact that there are less lots and less impervious surface now, which requires a smaller detention pond. The private road and detention pond would still be owned and maintained by the HOA. If approved, all previous stipulations not in conflict with this revision should remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 45? Madam Chair, Chairman Board, is one person opposed. Would the applicant in opposition come forward to be sworn in?
Good evening. My name is Abbas Haderi. I'm here asking for changes.
Can you come closer to the mic for me, please? Thank you.
Okay. This is small, the six-lot subdivision was approved last year for six lot. We are changing, we are asking for modification for, for stipulation number four and six, oh, four, nine, I'm sorry. Number, number four is we are reducing the number of lot from six to four lots. And number nine is we had a retaining wall for detention pond. We are eliminating that retaining wall. So those are the only changes we are asking for the stipulation. And remaining stipulation will stay in place. We are not changing any landscaping. All the requirement will stay the same. With that said, I can answer any question you guys have.
Thank you. We'll hear you. We'll hear from opposition.
Chair Cupid?
Yes.
Commissioners, my name is Richard Stewart. I live in Column Gate Subdivision. My lot shares 125 feet of property line with the subject property. When this board approved other business OB 12 in 2020 of last year, it imposed a specific requirement, no averaging of the impervious allowed on these lots. That these lots meet the impervious restrictions that are in the code. The applicant has made certain changes to stipulation four. The portion of stipulation four that applicant did not change, did not modify today, states even though the gated community ordinance allows averaging of the impervious surface of each lot. In this particular instance, all of the lots meet R-12, R-20 requirements with respect to the size and allowed percentage of impervious surface, which is a maximum of 35%. To avoid future misunderstanding on when averaging, on whether averaging of the impervious is allowed, we ask that the language in stipulation four regarding the gated community ordinance be deleted. In approving OB 12, the board clearly imposed the specific requirement of no averaging of the impervious on these lots. With respect to stipulation nine and the detention pond, we ask that you require as part of this authorization that the earthen wall of the detention pond be no closer to the property lines than the proposed concrete wall that it replaces, no closer than 35 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in opposition? All right, John, can you let us know what staff's recommendation is?
Madam Chairman, Board, the staff would recommend the Board of Commissioners approve the request, subject to the letter from ACR Engineering dated August 2nd, 2021, subject to the site plans contained in the other business packet, with the district commissioner approving minor changes, subject to the Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet, the store water management division comments contained in the, in the other business packet, fire department comments contained in the other business packet, and all previous conditions not in conflict to remain in effect.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments as well, Richard, but can the applicant come up, please? Thank you. Regarding stipulation four and the commentary about that second half of that stipulation, that it would stay in effect, that was something you were amenable to? The no averaging of the impervious allowed on these lots, each, each individual lot needs to meet the impervious restrictions that are in the code?
We agree to that.
Awesome. And then for stipulation nine, that was something that was a bit new in terms of what was requested, about the 35-feet requirement, no, no, no further?
We are, we are actually further than originally 35-foot wall. See, we are further away. So we are about 45 feet or 40 feet away from the adjacent property that originally was designed, that wall. Actually, it is right now much better than what it was before.
Correct, okay. Thank you. And I, I'm, I think that concludes my questions for you. Does anyone else have any questions for, for the applicant? Okay, pit opposition, come up. I just want to make sure I'm clear on what was articulated. Thank you. So for that second component, did you hear his response?
I can't hear.
For stipulation nine?
Yes.
When you were asking about that piece, did you?
Yes.
Did you hear what the applicant's response was?
I did not.
Okay, he was remarking that the current, the plan that's proposed has a setback further away. It's about 45 feet in distance.
Okay.
So with that being in compliance, does that satisfy your concern or is there?
So the wall of the detention pond will be 45 feet from the property line, is that what you said?
There is no wall.
Is that what you said?
Forty to 45.
There is no wall.
There's no wall, sorry.
It's just an earthen dam.
The detention pond itself would be no closer to the property line than 35 feet.
No, the slopes of the pond are probably going to be closer than, than 45 feet. Can we get Carl Carver, Carl up here?
Okay.
The, the slope of the dam is probably going to be closer than the 45 feet. We're going to have Carl kind of clarify that for y'all.
Okay, thank you, because I'm just, I guess I'm a little unclear, too.
Carl Carver, Cobb County Stormwater. The slopes of the, I have not seen the revised grading plan, but it's very likely that the revised grading will have the slopes closer than 35 feet from the property line. And they will probably slope up to the top of the detention pond berm. So it's a good chance they might be closer than the 35-foot where the wall was.
Go ahead. And how tall are we anticipating this sloped berm to be?
I don't know. Part of my stipulations was that they would have to provide an updated hydrology study because the hydraulics of going from a walled detention pond to an earthen berm detention pond is totally different. So the whole land disturbance permit will have to be revised. So at that time, I will see a grading plan and a, and a new hydrology study.
Yes, applicant?
Thank you.
We have already submitted the revised LDP, and hydrology was reviewed with David Breenan months ago, and he was okay with it.
John, our bill, can we have this motion be contingent upon the hydrology study? And I don't know what particular data would be needed based off of what was shared by looking at the hydrology study, what would be needed to qualify it to pass muster.
Can I show something mentioned here, please?
Yeah, and while he's doing that, Chairwoman Cupid, you know, in the original condition, the pond was required to be 32 feet off the property line because it was going to be a walled pond. That was at least five feet out of the ground, so that's why the board set it back so far.
I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
The detention pond was going to have a wall to begin with, which was going to be 32 feet off the property line. And they wanted to have that far off the property line in order to install, install landscaping in front of it, so that the folks wouldn't see it.
Okay. And maybe that gets to what the concern is, the view?
Maybe, and just if the applicant has data that is different than what staff has, because you're, you're articulating for you to 45 feet. And then we're getting articulation of less than 30, almost.
Yeah, and.
That discrepancy is.
If you don't mind, the ball was originally right over here. And earthen dam is start from here. So we have moved the ball back, further back. We have moved the earthen dam further back. The ball originally was right here, approximately.
Sorry, sir, if you can explain, you said there is no wall, so.
Right now, there is no wall. It's earthen dam.
So you said you moved it back. Is that where it starts to slope?
That's, that's where the slope starts, that blue line.
Okay. Excuse me, sir, for the opposition, may you come forward? There's another question for you.
Yes.
Is your property to the right side of this or below?
I am the third house and, from Paper Mill Road. So my property is to the south, west, is to the west.
Oh, okay, over here. I got you.
Is here. My, my lot, my lot ends right here.
Okay.
I'm just not clear on how to proceed with the discrepancy in information.
And Matt, I perceive from what John is sharing from last year's zoning hearing that the view of the wall was a concern. So there was a goal to move it back so that they can put up landscaping. I don't know how that view changed it. I see, I, I don't know how that view changes since it's not walled anymore. I presume it's more of a natural detention pond. So I'm not sure if landscaping is needed, if this is as much of a concern. And so you might not be able to hear me. But last year, the view of the wall was a concern. But now they're not putting forward a wall. It's more of a natural-looking detention pond.
The issue is how close is the detention pond?
The issue is how close is the detention pond to our properties?
Okay, so you want to pull further away?
I, it, the information that was available online, from the information that was available online, you could not tell exactly the slope of the detention pond wall. It was not, you couldn't zoom in big enough on it to see that. So I don't know how quickly it goes to this full height.
I don't know if that can be resolved from what I'm hearing from Stormwater, at least right now, without seeing a plan. And I see the gentleman from Stormwater waving his hand here. Can have him clarify.
Just generally speaking, when we have a Stormwater pond adjacent to a residential subdivision with no wall, we try to get it to be 10 to 20 feet away from the property line, minimum. That's so that the allowance of the discharge from the pond and some landscaping can be done between the property line and the bottom or the toe of the detention pond. That's our standard.
So Commissioner Gamble? I have additional questions, but...
So the way he has it designed does not meet our setback guidelines. So then the next question is, is in order to meet our setback guidelines, will this design fit his needs?
I think he's probably got the at least 20 feet between this discharge point and the property line. So it's a matter of, is there enough room to get a 10-foot landscape strip between the property line and the toe of the pond?
I guess my 20-foot question goes between the adjacent homeowner that is here, Mr. Stewart. Because it does not appear that there's 20 feet off of his property line or the adjacent neighbor who is not here.
Correct. Based on this plan, it's hard to determine without a grading plan. And Dave Braden may have seen that, but I have not seen it.
That's the concern is, and it gets back to the question, is there a way that we can make Commissioner Richardson's proposal contingent upon what's currently under review? Because it looks as if the applicant submitted something that he stated did pass muster, which would make me presume it meets those standards. But without Dave being here, it's hard to...
Okay, and I think the real easy way to solve this problem is just to put a condition in that the slope of the pond be 20 feet off the property line with a 20-foot landscape buffer.
Are you comfortable with that, Commissioner?
I am, I just... I am, if it's physically possible. Okay, come up, one more.
It is huge.
And I just want to be clear. What we're saying is that this detention pond is actually smaller than what was previously approved and supposedly met all stipulations.
You see over here, we have a 10-foot landscape easement. And then we have another 10-foot landscape strip. So we are already about close to 25 feet away from its property. Detention pond is going to go from there down. So we have 10-foot landscape, I mean, detention easement, and then another 10-foot landscape strip. So we are already, we have those already.
Okay, so a detention easement is at, you're at 20 feet for detention easement?
10 and 10, 20 feet, correct.
Does that, is that consistent with what you shared, John?
It, it, it looks like it. I'm looking at the picture right now, where Mr. Stewart's property is and where the pond is. You know, I think if we put, you know, it's got to be 20 feet off the Stewart's property line with a 20-foot landscape buffer, I think that'll, that'll cover it.
Okay. Did you get that, Commissioner? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for everybody's help. All right. Well, with everyone's participation, I'm going to move forward with a motion. So a motion to approve OB 45 with the requested stipulation amendments and with an additional or reiteration of the stipulation, no averaging of the impervious allowed on these lots. Each individual lot to meet the impervious restrictions that are in the code for stipulation four. And for stipulation nine, that there is a minimum of a 20-foot setback from the detention pond. And then within that, at least 10 feet, a landscape buffer. And all other staff comment? Otherwise, not in conflict. I think that covers...
And that includes the reduction from six lots to four lots, correct?
That includes the reduction of six lots to four lots. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, that concludes our zoning hearing for today, Commissioners. A whole hour earlier than anticipated.